Had to replace some batteries, so thank you for your patience. But it's 6:02, so we will call the regular meeting of July for the Spalding County Planning Commission to order. My name is Bruce Ballard. I am filling in for Ms. Upchurch today who could not be here. So we do have a quorum and are ready to move forward with the meeting. Our first item on the agenda following that is the invocation that's going to be provided by Mr. Doug Hardwick tonight. So if we'll stand, please, and have the invocation, then we'll follow up with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, sir. Thanks. And most gracious heavenly Father, we do thank you for this another day that you've allowed each of us. Father, we also recognize the blessings you send us, not only individually but collectively within this country. We thank you that we have times for a forum like this, that people can express their opinions. Father, I pray that you'll help us to keep it civil. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Okay, now if you'll join me to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, which stands one nation, not a nation, indivisible, indivisible, and just as for all. Okay, again, thank you very much for your attendance and being here tonight for this meeting. I will read through our basic guidelines as we move forward. Don't expect there will be an issue, but we always try to bring this up and make everybody aware. So speakers must sign up prior to the meeting and provide their names, address, and the topic they wish to discuss. So as I mentioned earlier, there are sign-up sheets back there. Please sign up for any specific item you are here that you would like to share with us some information on. Speakers must direct your remarks to the board and not to the individual board members or to the audience. Personal disagreements with individual board members or county employees are not a matter of public concern, and personal attacks will not be tolerated. The Chair has the right to limit your comments in the interest of disposing of county business in an efficient and respectable manner. Speakers will be allotted three minutes to speak on their chosen topics as they relate to matters pertinent to the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No questions will be asked by any of the board members during public hearing. Outbursts from the audience will not be tolerated. Common courtesy and civility are expected at all times during the meeting. No speaker will be permitted to speak more than three minutes or more than once unless the board votes to suspend this rule. Okay, so fairly simple. We will limit the actual discussions to three minutes, and please, you know, again, we know that everybody has their points and all, but so kind of don't try to repeat. A lot of repeats and stuff are not necessary. We can get that, and let's hear all the different versions and things of importance as we move forward. All right, so with that being said, we do not have any further old business on the list, but we do have new business, and the first item on the list is Application 2526B. And I know there was also, thinking some of our documentation, that was actually noted as 2530V, but it's the same, and it is Bo James Street LLC and Vic Patel, owner, 1679 MLK Parkway, Griffin, Georgia, 30224, located in Land Lot 119 of the Second Land District, parcel number 23303007M, consisting of 1.38 acres. The applicant is requesting variance to certain tri-county crossing overlay standards. So with that being said, David, if you would give us a brief introduction on that.
Yes, sir. So this relates to item number two, which you reviewed last Planning Commission meeting, the tri-county crossing overlay requirements for this property. And then, of course, officially, like Zaxby's beside it, it needed some variances for certain design elements. So you instructed me to tell the applicant to come back with a variance application as well to go along with item number two, so they have done that. As was Zaxby's, Dairy Queen is a national franchise, obviously. There are certain requirements in this tri-county overlay that they cannot comply with due to the fact their buildings are a template, their layout of the site is a template, and it has to all kind of be cookie cutter kind of the same way. So I did spot in the staff report, the main things they needed variances for, so it's kind of all rolled into one variance. There are certain facade materials and things like that they cannot abide by in the street facade frontage, outlined that in the staff report. Also, they cannot have, there's a building line. The intent of tri-county crossing is there's a, like, they want to have street sidewalk, storefront, like immediately, everything close to the road, no parking in front. Obviously, from their template of a layout, they cannot do that, Dairy Queen, so there is some parking in the front. Most of it is in the sides and the back, but some is in the front, so they cannot abide by that as well. So again, just like Zaxby's going for the same, similar variances for certain design elements, Dairy Queen is having to do the same thing.
Thank you for that update. And so with that, again, we will take anybody that has interest to speak. Do we have anyone signed up to speak on this item?
No, sir, there's nobody signed up for this application.
Okay.
You probably should have, anyway, motioned for open public hearing regardless.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm making motion to open the hearing.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor? All right. Now, if we don't have anybody signed up as of yet?
Right.
Is the applicant here?
I believe so.
All right, so if we haven't...
I talked to the applicant this afternoon, and they were not aware that that present was requested.
Okay.
Making motion to close.
Thank you, sir. Motion to close.
Second.
Second by Mr. Beal. Okay. All right, all in favor? Please signify. All right, with that being closed, we'll look at your staff recommendations, David.
Pretty much, probably talked too much during the introductions. I pretty much gave the staff report. Staff report is for, recommendation is for approval due to the fact it is a national chain and cannot meet many of the specific design requirements.
Okay. I know that you did have a few comments you had passed along, anything you wanted to say in that regard?
No, I'm gonna let David's staff report stand.
Okay.
Did we need to specifically identify any items, it says, like Zaxby's, so, I mean...
Well, I mentioned the parking in the front. Also mentioned certain materials on the storefront facade they cannot do due to being a typical Dairy Queen. Those were the main ones, storefront materials and parking in the front.
Okay.
That'll be addressed during the review process?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, that's the main things they're seeking a variance for.
Okay, okay. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, a question, and I know I'm this last meeting, so I'm at a big disadvantage here, but when you say parking in the front, David, are you talking about, sorry, parking in front of the building or parking in front of a certain setback? Because I'm looking at their site plan...
Meaning parking between the road and the building, a lot of certain overlays and downtown districts and stuff, just want to see the building and no parking in front of it at all.
Okay, so like the, where the handicapped parking place is and several over on the, what, south side?
Yeah, they have a certain layout with the drive-through, the parking and everything they have to fulfill, and like it's literally cookie cutter pretty much on all their sites.
Now, I remember you had a comment in there that they hadn't supplied you with something like number of employ, because the parking, number of parking spaces is based off of what? Was that employees or...
It's the number of seats in the restaurant and the employees per shift. I think they actually gave that to me a while back, but...
I can't remember where I saw that, said you were still lacking something.
Yeah, I think they actually, and several weeks ago, updated that for me, so...
Was that the biggest problem then, the parking and the...
Parking in the front, and then the, it tosses out on the facade, having, you know, 75% the windows, 75% the length of the building, having certain amounts of brick and stone, this and that and the other, so, you know, Dairy Queens have, they, their product has improved a lot through the years, but it's still not to this standard.
I'm reminded of what you see over in Fayette County, and if people want to be places for money, they will do that. And all my tone of, or call of reference is back what I'd heard in this area before of the tri-county overlay, that it was rather rigorous, but we were holding people feet to the fire. So in these variances, what are we going to allow them to do?
What you see on the site plan.
And so with the typical Dairy Queen facade and the somewhat of a parking out front with the drive lane out front as well, they have to have a certain circulation. Oh, yeah, well, I understand circulation. So the parking couldn't be slid further back?
I don't believe so.
And further deeper in the site? And I know Bruce and Frank were here back during Zaxby's and other developments. How, what was that like, a give and take, or, I mean...
Yeah, they, I mean, they generally were trying to work with us, but a couple of those were just some aspects with some sidewalks and different things, and that went pretty much to nowhere and so forth, so just kind of working through some of those items, but we wanted all to tie together, though. That's why we tried to stick with it, one after another, to make it work.
Fully understand the concept. Is there a way to reduce the number of parking places, just looking at the ones in the back? And to move the ones up front into the back? And I don't think I've ever been to Dairy Queen that all spaces, or any business where every single space is filled.
I can ask them. I know for a fact, when I go to that Zaxby's on a Sunday, that's not a place you want to be, because there is no parking spaces.
Well, drive-through is another, another issue. Yeah, I mean, I agree, drive-through, but there's always empty spaces. Parking is a big thing that is a problem. Okay.
Well, and there are some pretty nice Dairy Queens. When you go around some other areas now, they're nice brick buildings, and they have a different look, and so we would like to make it as nice as possible.
Yeah, because I agree, that Zaxby's does look very nice, and that whole area's got a nicer tone to it.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? Comments or questions?
One point I would make, we've always had with individual tracts, problems with the TCC overlay. We've always had to, they've always had to get adjustments to that. TCC is intended to be best applied to the property in TCC located between the bypass and Highway 19 to provide a comprehensive development plan. When you come to single parcels, there have always been problems.
So then is the ordinance too restrictive?
Ask ARC, they drafted it for us.
Oh, I'm just asking from, just sitting here. Okay.
Okay, so based on that, we have a recommendation.
Well, I'll move to approve with staff conditions.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right. All right, any further discussion? Here or none, all in favor?
Is there a second?
Yeah. Frank, second. All in favor? Any opposition? All right, that's unanimous, thank you very much. All right, that takes us on down to an associated item, tri-county crossing overlay district review. Bo James Street LLC, owner, 1679 MLK Parkway, Griffin, Georgia, 30224, located in Land Lot 119 of the Second Land District, parcel number 23303007M, consisting of 1.38 acres per section 22.06B. Review of site development plan for professional restaurant is required. Mr. Allen?
I have no further comment, other than what I've already talked about with the variance.
Okay. All right, and in this particular one, we do not have a public hearing, is not required, or is not advertised. So anyway, any further items for the board members?
That was second.
All right, do we have a... Don't have any comments? Do we have a motion?
To approve.
That's second.
Harris, Mr. Hardwick? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here or none? Call for the vote, all in favor? All right, thank you. Unanimous. Okay, item number three, Application 25-03 Flume, SS Land Holding Group LLC, owner, 5 Witten Avenue, Griffin, Georgia, 30223, located in Land Lot 178 of the Second Land District, parcel number 12208007, consisting of 23.38 acres. The applicant is requesting to remove the Mill Village Overlay District designation from the C2 zoning, zone property, thus requiring a future land use map amendment. So David, a little introduction to that?
Yes, sir. So as you said, we have a future land use map amendment proposal tonight for 5 Witten Avenue, over there in the eastern part of the city. It is zone C2 manufacturing, however, it is within the Mill Village Overlay District, which was adopted several years back by the county to hopefully revitalize that area with residential components to it, mill houses and the like, in some future time, but the applicant is still wanting a C2 manufacturing use for his business, and he would like to have consideration of removing the Mill Village Overlay residential part of his zoning. So that is why he's here tonight for this property and the next property, however, since they are not touching, we recommend you keep the public hearings form separate, so...
Okay. Well, thank you for that, and with that, we'll open the floor for have a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All right, thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All right, do we have anybody signed up for that particular item?
Yes, sir, I believe we have the applicant's representative, Stephen Jones.
Just a reminder, we're going to follow the 20 minutes per side rule for these hearings tonight, so...
I will not take that much time.
If they are needed.
We hope not. All right, name and address, please, sir?
Chairman Commissioners, my name is Stephen Jones, with the law firm of Taylor Duma, manager of 1600 Parkwood Circle, Suite 200, Atlanta, Georgia. Mr. Morales, I have a PowerPoint. As Mr. Allen stated, this is a companion application with item 525-20Z on your application, on your agenda packet, you'll see those agenda items up there on the screen, you'll see the portion of the subject property there. As you can see, that majority of the property is zone C2, it is the site of a former mill. As the Mill Village Overlay notes, the residential area surrounding here and the other residential areas which are subject of the Mill Village Overlay are around former mill sites. Your Mill Village Overlay is intended to protect the residential areas, but it is also serves to guide revitalization of the neighborhood. You'll see a portion of the subject property here, as shown on the Mill Village Overlay, the Mill Village Overlay is that pink area. This property, again, is the site of a former mill. The reason we're requesting the future land use map amendment and the rezoning to move it out of the Mill Village Overlay is that the applicant wants to use it for business enterprises on a former mill site. I'll go into the applicant and its business, but the hope is that it provides an employment center that facilitates the entire purpose of the Mill Village Overlay, which is the revitalization of the neighborhood. The Mill Village Overlay was created to protect residential lots. Right now, the portion of the Mill Village Overlay is applied to a former industrial site. What we're proposing, though, to pay homage to the overlay is to only carve out approximately 15, 16 acres of the existing 23 acres. In other words, we would carve out that red portion, leaving the portion outlined in green that borders the red in the overlay, so that there is a buffer between the revitalized employment site and the Mill Village residences. So it's really the best of both worlds, right? You're accomplishing the purpose of the overlay. You know, if somebody wants to expand those lots, there would be the opportunity to do so, should they, could they reach an agreement with the applicant? And then potentially, you might even see expansion of residences into that area. The applicant is affiliated with Aviation Construction and Electric, which is a national, was a contractor that operates nationally to provide electrical contracting for airports all across the country. I'm accompanied by its proprietor, Mr. Stefan Paul Hance. He's leaving, what, tomorrow for Alaska to work on an airport? Every time I thought to me, there's another state doing some sort of electrical on an airport. The idea here is for Aviation Construction and Electric to be able to have this as its Georgia home. Stefan's a Georgia resident and wants to use this as his home base. He'll construct a building on the property if it's removed from the overlay, so that he can have the center of his operations there. The predominant thing would be the storage of that equipment, obviously, because being in the electrical contracting business, especially for aviation facilities, he has a ton of equipment that he needs to store there. But it will also ideally provide an employment center for the Mill Village. Additionally, the long-range plan is, if you'll remember when you considered the High Falls 16 North Side application for AKB, there were those contractor garage things. We're not doing the same thing here, but the long-range plan is because there's 16 acres is to provide other areas for small businesses in Spalding County to have a centralized hub and home. And what that would do is, we hope that they would then employ folks who would choose to live in the Mill Village Overlay, which would then further its overall purpose of revitalizing the neighborhood. You can see the subject property outlined here. Again, it is in the activity center, but you will note it is in close proximity to employment centers. Given that it was a former mill site, we feel that it is actually more properly categorized as an employment center. There is the exist, there is the remaining foundation of the mill on the property, which could be used as part of these activities and operations for Aviation Connect, as well as future businesses, again, the long-range plan of allowing other businesses to co-locate there and use it as an employment center. The comp plan also identifies this as an area requiring special attention. Not only is this area a federal opportunity zone, which the comp plan calls out as calling for special investment, but it's also a federal hub zone, meaning that if you're a federal contractor and your business is located in a hub zone and you meet other requirements, you get priority in federal contracts. So you're put, so by doing this, you would be allowing Aviation Connect to locate in a hub zone, have its business in Spalding County, ideally employ Spalding County residents, and drive additional taxes for the business operating there. I want to show you, again, the goal of the overlay is to revitalize the employment areas in and around the Mill Village. You can see an aerial of the former mill site here, and you can see in the foreground some of those existing mill homes. If you driven through, a lot of them have fallen into disrepair and need revitalization. Again, it's our hope that this would provide an employment center in the center of the Mill Village, which could then carry forward and help effectuate the purpose of the Mill Village Overlay. So with that, I'd ask that you vote to approve the Flume Amendment, so that we can revitalize and restore this former employment center, which will then carry forward to the Mill Village and hopefully effectuate its purpose. But as of right now, the Mill Village is restrictive and does not permit many of those C2 uses, including the use that the applicant wants to operate there, or its affiliate wants to operate there. Should you have any questions to me or regarding the business, I'd be happy to answer those at this time. As always, thank you for your consideration.
Any questions for Mr. Jones?
At the moment.
Good. Okay. Do we have anybody else signed up in this room?
No, sir, no one has signed up to speak.
Okay. All right, with no one else signed up to speak, and no questions directly for Mr. Jones, we'll ask for, close the public hearing, have a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. All in favor? All right, the hearing is closed. Mr. Allen, give us your staff report.
Yes, sir. So in addition to the property being in the Mill Village Overlay, which as Mr. Jones says, only allows for residential uses and revitalization of this residential neighborhood, this property is also in the East Griffin Activity Center, which reads, "Activity Centers are characterized by compact, walkable, higher-density or intensity developments. These areas are appropriate for mixed uses to contribute to a live-work-play environment. Future development should also emphasize high-quality building and site design, including dedicated, open civic space." Clearly, the intent of this is more of a blending of residential and businesses, a live-work-play type environment. Also, it's in within the urban proximity area, which is urban proximity areas that will allow dense residential development with a design that takes advantage of the grid-street pattern rather than a self-contained subdivision format. So again, the emphasis there is on residential, so we have three things here saying residential for the future for this, the Mill Village, the urban proximity, and the East Griffin Activity Center. The Mill Village, the urban proximity, and the East Griffin Activity Center. So thereby, it does not really align with the future land use map and goals of the comp plan. So I would recommend denial for the Flume.
Okay, Mr. Allen, one other question. I know, I don't have it pulled up, so we can't see there, but very close to that old mill site there, we had another mill site over in that area that a few years ago, we allowed a company to move into and do some things. Was that part of that overlay or not?
Yes, sir. I assume you're referring to VT Tire?
Yes.
Okay, yes, they were allowed to get out of the Mill Village Overlay. I think they were on, right on the edge of it, that they were allowed that. They went through the same process. Still working with them on their, their building and stuff. They had made great progress with the tires and everything out there, but as far as finishing, the applicant there had some health problems. I'm still waiting to hear back from him there as far as finishing. But that's the only one I know of, as you said, that was part of this as well.
Okay. And so again, that was right on the outer perimeter, I think, of the village. I couldn't, I couldn't remember exactly where the overlay.
It's actually, yeah, right where Eva's got the cursor wiggling around there. It's right on there on the corner of it. You can see that.
And again, with that one being a, still having a building there, I do remember some discussions about the fact that with that building and the condition of that building, it would be hard to go in and turn that into residential or other space. And so seemed like there was some consideration at that time. With that, that some allowance was given there to, okay, what will be the next best opportunity to go with? Unfortunately, the old mill at the site we're talking about now was torn down and shipped off to heat somewhere in England or somewhere, I believe, I understand. Okay, any other questions or comments?
Just to comment, the one that you're talking about with the tire company, they've had some environmental problems. I've been in touch with EPD and I don't see us accelerating that problem in that area.
Well, no, just comments from my section, side over here. That's, that's a huge chunk of land, and that looks like that was the heart of the Mill Village. I mean, everyone went to work, walked, probably, excuse me, trying to get over a lot of nasal congestion. Pardon me for coughing. And I only see one way into that. I drove out through there and it's a, it's an old narrow street. And the entire place that you're pointing out down there, I see it's on the backside too, because that was industrial lifeblood. Back in the day, you had to have rail. That's no longer the case or stuck the streets. And, you know, I haven't seen anything other than a floor slab as depicted that could be anywhere in the world of what would be the foundations. And I'm, I'm having a hard time picturing something that would be a good replacement. I mean, sure, it's growing weeds and trees and, but it is a elevated place. It's got constricted access even off of, what is that, High Falls Road, the main road there. That's very tight even just in a pickup truck. And I know they're not going to be using pickup trucks to go back and forth. Don't know about the people on the street that have fringes there, but.
Yeah, there's some houses right across from it at the, at the two different roads.
Yeah. And I, I mean, I, I can't see that it needs, I haven't seen anything compelling that's wow and says, wow, I really want to speak to take this out. Overlay.
All right, any further discussion? What about a recommendation?
I move to follow staff's recommendation to deny.
Second. All right, motion by Mr. Bryant and second by Mr. Harley. Any further review and discussion?
Just a, just a point here. You know, there was a lot of time and effort went into this future land use map. And this county was laid out accordingly. And I'm becoming very reluctant to make any change in all of the efforts that went into that. And it looks to me like this is just for financial gain and it's, it's not our responsibility to to make decisions upon whether somebody can develop it or not and make money.
Okay. All right. Thank you, any further discussion?
I'll look on Mr. Hardwick's comments.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by showing your hand. All right, that is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Gentlemen, the audience is having a really hard time hearing you guys, especially in the back of the room. So please make sure you speak directly into the mic.
Thank you, ma'am, and we'll try to do better. Okay. Item number four is application twenty-five dash zero four Flume. Anthony Cornaccia, owner, seven fifty-five High Falls Road, Griffin, Georgia, three oh two two three, located in Land Lot one seventy-seven of the second land district. Parcel number one nineteen zero two zero four seven, consisting of twenty-six point oh nine acres. The applicant is requesting to remove the Mill Village Overlay district designation from the C two zone property, thus requiring a future land use map amendment. All right, very similar to what we just went through, but David, you can go ahead.
It's one street over from the last one. It is, as you said, in the Mill Village Overlay. He's wanting the same basic purpose for it, to have more C two manufacturing-type uses by removing the overlay designation. This particular property is also in the suburban transition and urban proximity character areas, which also talk about residential development only, so.
All right, anything further?
No.
Okay, with that, do we have a motion to open public hearing?
I'm moved.
Second.
Mr. Bryant, all in favor? All right, we are open. Do we have anybody signed up for that one?
Yes, sir, we have the applicant signed up to speak.
All right.
Hello, gentlemen.
Hello.
I've never done anything like this before, so bear with me, because I'd probably be bouncing all over the place.
Let's start with the name and address.
My name is Anthony Cornaccia. I live in two oh eight Caramel Court in McDonough, Georgia.
Okay, thank you.
So back in February twenty twenty during COVID, I bought this property as an investment to, I was trying to do, because it has a ten thousand square foot building on it. I was gonna put like either a automotive business or a lawnmower repair shop or something like that in there. And then April of twenty twenty-one came and you guys put it in a Mill Village Overlay, of which I can't do anything with. So I decided that to start listing it and try to sell it. Every realtor that I dealt with, they're like, well, it's in a Mill Village Overlay. You bought it as C two commercial property. You're not going to get half of what you're trying to get for it. So I feel like the value of my property has been diminished from the day I purchased it once I got put in this Mill Village Overlay. To be able to find investors or anybody that's going to want to do something with the property, we looked at storage warehouses. We've looked at, you know, different opportunities. It was a Mill Village and it still has the big concrete pad from when they tore the mill down, which is going to make it very expensive to change that into residential, because you got to dig all that concrete up. I, I just want an opportunity to be able to, you know, take it out of the Mill Village Overlay, keep working with EXP Commercial, which is a realtor that I'm working with, and try to sell it to someone that can make it a better place to provide employment in, in the area to help with the Mill Village area. I just don't think that property is suited for residential based on how long I've owned it with the building and, you know, the pond that's over there and being right next to the Georgia Power substation and now right next to the future data center. I, I just, I just don't see where that's going to be a good residential area. And I know that that property's been listed as commercial C two for over a hundred years. So I'd like to, you know, be able to keep selling that as that kind of property, try to find someone that's got deeper pockets than myself to come in here and develop something. We've reached out to Residential Developments and they've even said that the property, because it's where it's at, it's going to be hard to get, you know, sewage and all that from the city. And, you know, they're just, it's a lot of investment to make some money. I don't really, you know, since I've owned it, I've done a lot of cleanup. I've cleaned the property a lot. It doesn't look as much of an eyesore as it used to. I do store a lot of equipment on there, but it's all my equipment. You know, I'm not making any money off of anybody. So I pay my taxes every year on time. So I'm just looking for an opportunity to sell it to someone that can do something with it.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, appreciate that. Anyone else signed up?
No, sir, nobody else has signed up for this application.
Make a move with closing the public hearing. Second.
Motion to close in a second. All right, all in favor, please show your hand. All right, that closes the public hearing. Mr. Allen?
My staff report is denial as with the other one due to the fact of the future residential intent for this area and not aligning with the suburban transition area and urban proximity area from the comp plan.
Okay. Any further comments or questions? I mean, I, I will say, you know, I, I can kind of understand a little bit of the, the applicants in both cases, the, the situation that it was an old mill. And so, and that was what brought all those houses over there. And, and we certainly wanted to keep the, you know, I was here when we kind of adopted the Mill Village overlays and we were certainly looking to preserve the houses there and kind of keep that semblance of a layout and stuff for the property. You know, I do think that there are opportunities. I mean, we haven't heard, I understand what they're looking more for, commercial ventures. And kind of that's what probably when they bought it, that's what was zoned and that was what they were, were working on. Certainly wasn't in the intention to harm anybody or take away from, you know, their livelihood or possibilities for their property when this was done, but it was to, to better an area or keep an area where it could be bettered and, and work through some of it. I do think, you know, there, there are some opportunity for some multi-use type ventures there. I mean, it was mentioned from the last applicant about a lawnmower, you know, a place to work on lawnmowers or a garage. But, you know, that can be tied in with residential and a multi-use type environments. In some cases, maybe not the specific thing, but I, I do think there are some possibilities, some other things that, that could be looked at. I do think that in any case, being that not only that it's in the Mill Village Overlay, but it's also tied in with this other plan to try to preserve the, and have more of a live-work-and-play type community and have amenities there that can kind of tie into that, that some of that stuff does need to be considered. So I'm not saying we may need to reconsider some things, look at some things a little differently as we move forward, but I do think that there should be some consideration from those, looking at those properties as what they might could do and bring to the table as well to make some possible concessions and stuff as we move forward. So I just wanted to put that in. Anything else from any of you folks?
Well, no, I, I was looking for the aerial again, sorry. Hope you can hear me, not my coughing, though. I do think the location of this former site is, is better being on High Falls, but it's, does have an unusual shape and I'm, I would like to think that more could be done than it's vacant. But I, once again, I did not hear anything that, that's compelling me to say we need to remove it. I am sympathetic to the fact that it's bought and purchased, but I, but I think our job is to say, your proposal is, is worthy of moving it ahead. And I don't, I don't see this as, once again, just because you want to do it, I didn't see a compelling reason of here's the, the commercial development that's going to replace what's there, so.
Okay.
Difficult area for sure.
Maybe we do need to take a second look at this. It is separated from the main Mill Village. And it is on the left-hand side if you're, you know, going out that way. But I think for this particular rezoning with not a specific use for it, we're not at that point yet.
One other comment along that, if we, if we were to change this and, and put it back as C two, now tell me what we would get in there and, and High Falls Road is not going to take that, put warehouses in there or whatever, a lot of truck traffic. You know, the, the roads there are not sufficient for that.
Okay. All right, so we've had some good discussion on that one. Do you have a recommendation?
I'll make a motion to, to deny per the staff report.
You have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here or none, all in favor? Thank you very much, unanimous. Okay. Does that change anything on the next couple since we?
The rezonings have to be compliant with the Flume. So since you didn't change it, it would not be compliant, so they're rendered moot.
Eric, did anybody sign up for the next two items as far as speaking?
Yes, sir, we had the Mr. Jones, the attorney, and then we also had somebody, Ms. Susan Gilbert.
I'm sorry, who?
Susan Gilbert.
Well, again, we have to have compliance with the Flume. Flume is the predecessor or conditioned precedent. So I would take the position that those are rendered moot and they would not, you would not have to have a hearing on that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, so that does strike five and six from the agenda based on the, what we had voted on for three and four. And that takes us to item seven. Application twenty-five dash twenty-four Z, Nice Parish. Owner, eight nine five Amelia Road, Locust Grove, Georgia, three oh two four eight, located in Land Lot one forty-one of the second land district, parcel number two zero 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 one zero four two, consisting of six point five nine acres. The applicant is requesting to rezone from R two single-family residential to AR one agricultural residential or agricultural purposes. And David, introduction, please.
Okay, so we've had a, two or three of these in the past six or eight months or so, including, I believe, this parish's neighbor, very simply wanting to go from the current R two to AR one for more agricultural purposes. Uh, very simply wanting to go from the current R two to A R one, uh, for more agricultural purposes. And in doing so, if, if approved, she would meet all the physical requirements in the code for A R one zoning.
Okay. All right, with that, I will consider a motion to open public hearing. I'll move.
Second.
All right. All in favor? So, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
Yes, sir. We have the applicant, Mr. Nice Parish.
Okay. Come on up. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, Denise Parish, eight-nine-five Amelia Road.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to say that, uh, I talked to both of my neighbors and they're in favor of me doing it. Um, I have chickens and I didn't know that I wasn't, um, agricultural, zoned agricultural, so I just wanna be up to code and make sure them following the rules, but my neighbor actually feeds my chickens. I just found out he was feeding him bird seed when I asked him if he was okay with this. And then my other neigh- neighbor said, oh, I didn't know we were, we weren't agricultural either, so they're, they're both fine on either side of me.
Okay. All right, well, we appreciate you wanting to be within compliance. All right. Anyone else signed up?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Here and that, I have a motion to close public hearing.
I'll move.
Thank you. Have a second. All right. All right, all in favor? All right, Mr. Allen, staff report and recommendation?
Uh, definitely recommend approval. I wish all items could be this easy.
Okay. I, I do have one question. I know, um, in the past, the last few of these we've done, um, it seems like the, the biggest item has been, uh, ensuring that they were not in a actual subdivision, um, layout. So this, this site is not in a planted subdivision?
Correct. No, it's not, and the area around it is overall agricultural residential in character, so.
Okay. Any further questions or comments from the board? Here and done, do we have a motion?
Motion.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here or none, all in favor? All right, unanimous. Thank you very much.
And ma'am, this will go in front of the commissioner's same room on August twenty-eighth at six P M.
Okay, item seven, application twenty-five.
As will all the others.
Yes.
As will all the others.
Okay. Application twenty-five dash twenty-four Z, well, sorry. I'm, I'm, I'm on eight now. Um, application twenty-five dash zero-nine S, Stephen Smith, North Griffin Church. Owner one-twelve La Prad Road, Griffin, Georgia, three oh-two-two-three. Located in land lot one hundred of the third land district. Parcel number one oh-three zero-two-zero-zero-eight consisting of one point two-two acres. The applicant is requesting a special exception for expansion of an adjacent church facility and parking onto the R one zone parcel for section seven oh-three B one. Mr. Allen?
Okay, so as you said, the church has been there for quite a while and desires to expand onto the next parcel with, uh, parking and a couple more buildings. I believe the pastor is here to speak about it.
Okay. All right, so with that being heard, uh, do we have a motion to open public hearing?
I'll move.
Thank you, Bill. Second?
I say.
All right. All in favor? Okay. And the applicant is, is here? All right. Please come up and provide us with your name and address.
Yes, sir. Evening commissioners. Uh, my name is Brian Griffin. Um, I'm at three-five-three Brown Station Drive in Williamson, Georgia. I'm a member and a, a, a board member of the North Griffin Church. Pastor wasn't able to be here today, but we just, uh, were excited for what's going on in our neighborhood and we recently acquired this property and we've been there since the late forties and, um, we pretty much built all we could build on our property. So we just wanted to come, consider, uh, approving this so we can make plans with my fellow board members on the future of our church.
Okay. Thank you very much for that update. Have anybody else signed up?
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Charles Steak.
All right.
Hello. My name is, uh, Charlie Steck. I live at five oh-five West Fossett Road, Concord, Georgia. And like Brian, I'm on the board too, and just real short, just wanna say we have a, a heart for that area, the pastors really do. And, uh, wanna make it better and reach out, and so we appreciate y'all's approval. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
No, sir.
Okay. Have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move.
Yes, second.
All right. We have a motion and a second, all in favor? All right, Mr. Allen, staff report and recommendation?
Okay, so even though it's an existing church, the fact it is expanding to the next property means a special exception is required. There's, uh, four basic, I'm sorry, five basic, um, requirements to be met. Must be located either arterial or collector road, La Prad or La Prade, however you say it as a collector road. La Prad.
La Prade.
La Prade.
La Prade.
But it has an E on man.
All right, this is Griffin.
It's not a tag.
Lot must have a minimum road frontage of two hundred feet. Um, it will, once it's combined with the two properties together, will be over two hundred feet, uh, road frontage. The lot must have an area of at least four acres, once combined, uh, the existing piece plus the new piece. It will have, uh, just over four acres. All buildings must be located at least fifty feet from any property line. Uh, this mostly complies with that, however, the one building on the western side, um, the sixty by one twenty-five building is, I believe, a little bit closer, Elijah, to the, uh, setback than it needs to be, so this will have to be adjusted if this is approved, but I think we can work with that. Um, and then a buffer must be provided along all side and rear property lines. Based on the site plan submitted, there is not the required twenty-five foot buffer, so that will have to be worked out as far as a planted buffer for this side and rear property lines for this. But in terms of the size, frontage and all that, there is not an issue.
Okay, um, I know, I think you and I had looked at it and did have a question. I don't know if you'd had a chance to, to clarify or if somebody here tonight might could. Um, but on the new building, uh, and it was, they had a distance showing from the existing building over to that one and was that part of the reason why the building was pushing the edge? And could it be adjusted a little bit on the site plan maybe?
I think it can. Uh, the, typically the separation between, uh, the main building and accessory building is usually twelve feet.
Okay.
Looks like it's over twenty they have right there on their measurement, so there is a little bit of wiggle room there. Um, with shifting that building somewhat to get it, make sure it's appropriate enough for the main building, but also meets that, um, setback requirement.
Any, any other questions or comments from board here?
Well, I, I guess the, uh, existing house to the, uh, west, is that gonna be torn down or remodeled or?
It is, okay. You don't mind coming back up? Maybe you could just answer a few of these questions for us? So that and maybe, since you're coming back up also, just as far as the, the location of the building and that, do you know of any issue why it couldn't be shifted a little or adjusted?
None. We were, this was a preliminary that we were doing. This is not a final. We were just coming up with plans. We were, we were doing a feasibility study. If we did purchase the property, could we do something, but I don't really think that's the way it's gonna end up, but we just, um, that was just what we went with, with, with the engineers that we had.
Right. So y'all are willing to kinda work within the guidelines and do that, okay?
We'll, we'll work with every guideline.
All right.
Whatever y'all request.
And the house is, the house is staying? Being demolished.
We're, there are two, there's actually two gone there. They're really small. And I mean, we may end up using that as a driveway for our back parking lot.
Okay.
Uh, cause we need another, we need other access than to the back parking lot from what we have.
Okay.
And, and I guess neither, when would you expect to, to start all this work?
Um, as soon as possible, but it could be two years, so we've gotta, we've gotta go through and get everything, get all y'all's needs met and, and get a design on what we wanna do, but we really can't go forward until we know that we can get this property included in our main property, so we can really make plans with my board members on the future. But we're, we're growing and it's a good thing and we, we gotta stay a step ahead of the growth, so that's what we're trying to do.
So that was good. Any further questions?
What did, uh, being two years, is there any problem with the, uh, rezoning of this with?
We don't have the time limits or deadlines that other places have.
Okay, I didn't know if we're like start a construction or anything like that.
You will with a variance, but not a rezoning or a special exception.
Okay.
And there will be a period of time in which they have to commence construction when the permit issued.
Yes.
Right, right. So that's the key thing is, I guess, when the permit is issued.
Yes.
Start, starts the clock.
Yes.
Okay. Just wanna make sure you didn't get caught in a, not a problem.
Yeah, as soon as we get everything ironed out, we'll, we're gonna go forward. And once we do, we're, we're ready to go as soon as, as soon as everything gets worked out.
Okay.
That's it, that was it.
Appreciate it, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, anything further? All right. Um, consider a motion?
I'll move.
I'll second.
With conditions?
Well, it, I'm assuming it's more, what's your motion, Frank?
Are you good with that, Frank?
Yep.
Okay. Motion to approve with staff recommendations and conditions.
And second.
And a second by Mr. Bryant. Any further discussion? Here or none, all in favor? Thank you very much. That is unanimous. All right, item number nine, application twenty-five dash ten S. Alex Marlowe, Kayleen Marlowe, Nick Marlowe, Susan Marlowe, owners. Ninety Beasley Road, Griffin, Georgia, three oh-two-two-three, located in land lot thirty of the third land district. Portion of parcel number two-six-seven zero-one zero-two-four, consisting of five acres. The applicant is requesting a special exception to build a barn dominium on the A R one zone parcel for section five oh-three B twenty-five. Mr. Allen?
So tonight is apparently barn dominium night. We have three of these. Uh, the first one is the Marlowes, uh, so we will hear from them. If you recall, um, several months ago, um, they have about twenty acres, between fifteen, twenty acres. They had a piece rezoned from R one to A R one, five acres, uh, just for this purpose. That was approved. It's been planted. So now they're seeking to get the, uh, permit for the barn dominium, which requires a special exception due to it being a special kind of house. Um, so they all, they meet the size requirements in terms of the lot. Uh, you do have with you in your packet, um, some design drawings of the elevation, front, back sides. Also, um, the original site plan did not show the two-hundred-foot front setback line. I believe I sent this to you this afternoon or this morning, showing the updated site plan with a two-hundred-foot line. So that is in compliance now. Um, one thing we will need to discuss in terms of the building design itself, uh, it's all metal, uh, which you can have a certain amount of metal. However, twenty-five percent, I believe, of the exterior building materials have to be of, uh, conventional construction, which in the past, I've been conferring with Newton about this. We took as, uh, some kinda brick or masonry veneer or something along the, the water table from the ground, instead of having that metal as well, even if it's a different color. So we need to talk about that a little bit, uh, but we'll let the, uh, people speak, so.
Okay. All right. So do we have a motion to open public hearing?
I'll move.
Second.
All right, motion and a second, all in favor? All right, Ms. Stein?
Yes, sir. One of the applicants, Nick Marlowe, is here to speak tonight.
Okay. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. I'm Nick Marlowe, one hundred Beasley Road, Griffin. I'm here with my wife, Susan, my son, Alex, daughter-in-law, Kayleen, and granddaughter, Adeline. So, uh, my wife and I recently relocated here. I say recently, it's been several months. Both of our, both of our kids, Kayleen and Alex, are both career pre- professionals, one with Delta Airlines, one with Caterpillar. I just recently retired from Caterpillar with over thirty years of service. My wife left her job as a, uh, in a public school and we moved down here to help the kids with our grandchildren, uh, because that becomes quite a daunting task. We have one that just turned one and, uh, they have another one that's due anytime this week, so. There, there they are here, so have them with us. So I also, besides working at Caterpillar and my wife working, we also ran a farm back home. We had our own business where we raised jack-o'-lanterns, gourds and squash, and we sold them on our property. So I had a lot of farm equipment that I brought down with me. So I needed a structure large enough to house all my equipment, more so than I needed a place to live. So we'd like to combine them. We, being on a retired income, I can't really afford to build a house and a building to keep my stuff in, so it just made sense to try and combine that into one building. So that is why we're requesting this, uh, application for a special request, exception for barn dominium.
Okay.
Appreciate your, uh, approval on this and look forward to working with you on this.
Okay, were you aware of the, um, what we were discussing earlier about the, uh, construction materials and twenty-five percent? So I know y'all have the color.
So we, we saw that, didn't really understand exactly what it meant, because if you look up conventional construction materials, steel is a conventional construction material, so i- if, in my personal opinion, to me, it makes more sense to be steel because steel is a longer-lasting, stronger structure. It's better against termites, it's better against rot. Um, if they do a, if they do a veneer overlay, they have to go in and put plywood in, so then you're susceptible, susceptible to the termites, the rot, that you're not with steel, so I'll need clarification on exactly what we gotta do, but we'll do whatever we need to do to meet those standards. I guess another question on that would be, does that just count the house part of the structure or the entire structure? Uh, because the, the house part will only be the front and two side, part of two sides, so just need some clarification on that, but we'll do whatever we have to do to meet regulations.
Okay, well, well, those details are, are there, they'll be glad to go over those with you and share those with you, okay?
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. Anyone else signed up?
No, sir. No one else has signed up for this application.
Okay, any further questions before we sit down from any of you fellows?
Okay.
Uh, I have a question for David.
Okay.
Uh.
You wanna go and close the public hearing?
Yeah, let's close.
Oh, a motion to pu- close public hearing?
I'll second that.
Well, I'll, I'll move to that unless Doug did it.
All right.
Doug did it.
Yeah, he did.
Okay, all in favor? All right, go, go ahead, Mr. Horst.
Uh, is, is the applicant, uh, did you approach the, the masonry having to go all the way around or just on the housing part?
Um, it says twenty-five percent of materials, so it doesn't really, um, of each side, yes, sir, it's each side.
Okay, so you're talking about the whole thing with masonry all the way around, correct?
Well, if that's the way you went, yes, um. So it says at least twenty-five percent of each side of the structure shall be constructed of conventional exterior materials.
Okay.
What we've generally seen has been brick, rock, you know, some type of stone or something.
Stuck over large blankets. It's an exterior material, not an interior construction.
Okay.
Okay, any further questions?
One, uh, just a question on the, uh, rendering here. It's up there. It looks like there is a lower portion of the wall there. I see it a different color. I'm assuming that's.
Just a different color steel.
Oh, a different color steel, okay.
Right. Kinda matched the roof.
So much for not being able to zoom in. Okay, got it.
Okay. All right, David, staff report and recommendations?
Uh, staff does recommend approval for meeting the basic, uh, guidelines for the lot size. Uh, also the roof pitch, uh, things like the porch, all of that is in compliance. Porch post, location of the sliding doors, um, so that is, it's just a question of whether, what we're gonna do with the, I guess, the water table, if you wanna call it that, at the bottom or whatever to make the, whether it's twenty-five percent of conventional exterior materials. whether it's twenty-five percent of conventional exterior materials or something different other than the steel.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? All right, here none, I'll consider a motion.
I'll move.
I second that.
All right, so we have a motion to recommendation on, uh, going along with staff recommendations?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Here none, all in favor?
Who is the second?
Doug.
Yes, Doug.
All right, thank you very much.
Likewise, that'll be on August, uh, twenty-eighth for a final decision by the commissioners.
Okay, that takes us to item number ten, application twenty-five dash eleven S. Jeremy and Joanne Outlaw, owners, two twenty Amelia Road, Griffin, Georgia, three oh two two three, located in land lot one oh eight of the second land district. Parcel number two oh five zero one zero one five, consisting of twenty-one point eight three acres. The applicant is requesting a special exception to build a barn dominium on the AR one zone parcel per section five oh three B twenty-five. Mr. Allen?
Okay, uh, this is our second barn dominium of the night, at two twenty Amelia Road. Um, meets the, uh, physical requirements of the site and has way more than the five acres involved, twenty-one some odd acres. Uh, the applicant did give me, uh, late drawings in terms of the design, which I have, I believe I forwarded to you this afternoon. Uh, seems to meet all their different requirements in terms of roof pitch and design of the porches. Um, materials on the bottom of this one are a stone veneer, as well as the bottom half of the columns as well. Uh, the doors are also on the side, not facing the street. So based on what he gave me in terms of the design of the house, seems to meet those requirements as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have a motion enter in public hearing?
I'll move.
Second.
All right, motion second, all in favor? We have applicant here or?
Yes, sir, we have both applicants present.
Okay. Good evening.
Good evening. Jeremy Lang, this is my wife Joanna Lang. Uh, we currently reside at one twenty Oakwood Lakes Drive in Hampton, Georgia. Uh, we've been a resident in Hampton for just over twenty years now. Uh, my father and his wife just moved into Peachtree Sun City, uh, here in Griffin area. And my daughter, son-in-law, and our grandchildren live behind Spalding County High School here in Griffin as well. Um, I own my office, Edward Jones office in Hampton, which is all right off of Highway twenty. Uh, I've been there for twenty-one, well, I've had that location for over ten years now. Uh, the plan is that that's where we'll be forever, and this location puts us kinda near my parent, my dad and his wife and the grandchildren. Um, we purchased, uh, two twenty Amelia Road. So, uh, we purchased just over twenty-one and a half acres that we had addressed at two twenty Amelia Road. We were also able to purchase the adjoining just under twenty-one and a half acres, which we had addressed at one eighty Amelia Road. Uh, we're requesting an exception to build a barn dominium on two twenty Amelia Road. Uh, in our application, we have the blueprints for the skeleton, which is the fifty by eighty steel building, uh, with a self-supporting structure, four twelve pitch and sixteen feet walls. We have a photo of the internal organs of the structure, the seventeen fifty living space, the twenty twenty-two, the twenty-two fifty open bay area in the garage. Uh, it has, uh, including the exits and entrances, uh, three garage bay doors, two on one side and one on the other. Uh, we also have a photo of the skin of the structure that shows the colors we're using, and a picture of the clothes of the building, which shows the semi wraparound porch, and additional building materials that would go with the porch and the, uh, columns. Um, we've got ex, uh, pictures of existing structures in the area, a photo looking down our driveway. Uh, we haven't, we had no intention of the building being, our residence being able to be seen from the street was why we bought the property. Uh, in the summer, if someone's driving towards the property, they might see a piece of the building if they were to be not looking at the road. In the winter, uh, you, then you probably see through the trees, and when it's, the foliage is down, you'd see a little bit more of the corner of part of the building back on the property. Um, in addition to this, um, well, so that was kinda it. We also included a photo coming down the street where the sign is. Really, when you're looking down the street, you can't even tell there's a break there. Of course, we'd have a gravel drive going in, so that would make it a little more visible, but we have no intention of clearing any of that. We also had all of the acreage put into the, uh, conservation, uh, for, so we have no intentions of making changes or, or doing anything. For the Lord willing, at least thirty years, but certainly for the ten years of the, uh, conservation requirement.
Okay.
So that's kind of what we're asking, requesting.
All right, thank you very much, looks nice. Um, any further?
No, sir.
Okay, here none, now have a motion to close public hearing?
Got a question, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we've got a situation like this, and, and I have that. Uh, where your residence is in Coop. All right, how much, do we have a minimum that is required for the residence itself, which in other words does not qualify for Coop?
Two acres.
Two acres.
Right, yeah, you have to put a, used to be it was Coop was ten acres, now it has to be twelve, so you have to cut out a two acre square around the house.
Good, thank you, that's all I need.
All right. Anything further? Okay, Mr. Allen, report and recommendation?
Uh, staff recommends approval, uh, meets the size requirements in terms of the property. Uh, based on the pictures we have now received of the design, it seems to meet all the requirements for the design as well for a barn dominium, so. And as the applicant said, even if it did not, is, uh, gonna be barely visible from the street, um, so I don't have any problems with this.
Okay. All right, we have a recommendation?
A move to approve, move to approve per, uh, staff recommendations.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Uh, I just wanna ask if the applicant has any problem with, with going, uh, on around the house with the masonry. I noticed our picture showed that it only went on the front.
You got any further questions?
The emphasis to me, and there again, it doesn't say this yet, but the emphasis to me should be on especially the street-facing sides.
Right. And, and again, as he mentioned, when you have big roll-up doors and things like that.
Right.
I mean, you have, that, it would be considered as well as the windows and so forth. So again, um, you know, we wanna make it work, we want it to be, um, tied in. Um, as I mentioned earlier, though, was, um, well, actually, that was at the last meeting, but we, we do have people that, um, that start to do something, there's a plan, but then they don't always follow through with what there was intended. Um, so, you know, you can't always go by something that was just out there, but, um, you know, we do, just need to make sure that it works through and it's approved by David's office. And as long as that's the case, we should be in good shape.
Yes, sir, we are.
And that's why I have you.
Oh. Okay. Thank you very much.
Uh, Bruce, when, when we adopted the, when we adopted the barn dominium ordinance, there are photos of acceptable designs, including showing the accent features on the buildings. Those are in the community development office, Deborah Bell approved them, and they are part of this definition.
Okay.
The goal was to not have a residence that looks like a Maywall building.
Right. Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second, and I think we've hopefully clarified, any further questions or comments? All right, here none, um, a call for a question, all in favor? All opposed, all right, here none, that's unanimous. All right. Item number eleven, application twenty-five dash twelve S. Lakisha Bede and Leonard Guzbi, owners, sixty-five Jones Road, Griffin, Georgia, three oh two two three, located in land lot seventy of the third land district. Parcel number two four seven zero three zero zero seven D, consisting of three point four two acres. The applicant is requesting a special exception for a personal care home on the R two dash AR one zone parcel per section eight zero three B five. Mr. Allen?
All right, shifting gears from barn dominions for a minute, we're going to a personal care home at an existing house at sixty-five Jones Road. This, uh, personal care home, per the applicant, will be just for elderly. It will not be any kinda drug treatment or any kinda program like that. So it'll be for elderly residents there. There are certain, uh, parts of the code which, uh, give physical requirements for this, um, the minimum lot size, house size, so on and so forth, which I'll touch on in a few minutes in the staff report after the public hearing.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion to open public hearing?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? All right, do we have anybody signed up?
Yes, sir, we have the applicant Cory Mangum to speak.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Cory Mangum, I live at nine three two Hamilton Boulevard, Griffin, Georgia. Um, I was raised by my grandparents, so this and, eh, I've been a member over at Mount Zion Baptist Church for forty years, um, up under Reverend Lacy. But, um, and my job at the church on the committee is opals. I'm in charge of older people of lovely, that's eighty and above. So my heart is to be with, uh, I have a passion to work with older people. So this is a way for me to give back to the community. If you guys find that you guys, um, can make a, a special exception for me to, uh, open up a personal care home that I can give back to the community by helping our older people. So that's all I have to say, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay. Any questions?
Well, I, I guess, just, just looking at the, um, report here, it says that you've gotta be licensed by the Department of Community Health. How, where are you in that application process?
This is the first process, this is the first stage, and so once we get this approved, then I go, the next step is to get the state to come here and approve it.
All right, all right. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions for the applicant? All right, here none, anybody else signed up?
Yes, sir, we have one more person that signed up, Kelly Engel.
Okay.
Hello?
Hey there. My name's Kelly Engel, I live at ninety-six Helen Drive here in Griffin. Um, I, I live in this neighborhood where, uh, and I use Jones Road all the time, every day, sometimes multiple times a day. This is a residential neighborhood. Um, I've lived in this neighborhood for twenty-six years, never seen anything commercial built in this neighborhood. So I'm just concerned, um, that it's gonna cause more traffic. Um, it's just, it's just gonna cause a lot of issues. Um, I have nothing against personal care homes. Uh, the main reason I'm here tonight is just to find out what kinda personal care home, which was answered just now. So, um, that's good to know, it's for elderly, it's not for drug rehabilitation or anything like that. Um, so that's, that's the main reason I'm here. I have nothing against it, but I would like more information, like what, how big of a facility are we talking about? Um, because that area just doesn't look that big to me, where we're talking about building it. And like I said, there's a lot of houses around there. So, uh, it's just, it's just concerning, and I just like, would like more information.
Okay.
That's it.
Well, hopefully we're gonna answer a few of those questions for you as we get into the, the report here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else?
No, sir.
Okay, do we have a motion to close public hearing?
I'll move.
Second.
All right, thank you, all in favor? Hey, Mr. Allen, you wanna give us a little more details? I did, did see something in the report about the number of people that they could serve and so forth, maybe we could give a little details there?
Uh, so to answer the questions of the, the lady just now, uh, this will be in the, the house itself. It will not be another structure, the house will not be torn down, so it'll be still a, a residence there with the elderly there. Uh, applicant, is it, how many, were you saying, three? Four people, okay, all right. So based on that, it'll be four elderly people, I would imagine they're not rural, mobile as far as vehicles and things. I don't really see the traffic being an, an issue there. Um, the code does require certain sizes, uh, minimum lot size, three acres, we have that here. Uh, house size minimum, uh, for no more than four residents, which you just talked about, uh, one thousand seven hundred and fifty square feet. You have over twenty-four hundred heated square feet here, so it meets those requirements. There are also requirements for, uh, doing the Americans with Disabilities Acts in terms of like, uh, accessways, things like that. Community health, which Mr. Bryant mentioned. Fire marshal inspection, building inspection, however, these will be taken care of prior to opening, prior to getting a building permit if it's approved by all the boards. So those are kind of on hold with that. Um, no more than two residents may occupy a single bedroom, applicant's agreement with that, uh, they will, you know, not be three-door room by any means. Uh, so also a business license will be required. So quite a few of these have been met, but quite a few of these are dependent upon it being approved or not, so.
Okay, one, one question that I have, don't know if you know the answer, or we need to, um, inquire with the applicant, but, so will we have someone full-time there, um, during this time, the kinda?
Twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours care?
Yes, sir.
All right, and they will live there in the property as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right.
I guess that includes meals and?
It all, I'm sorry, yes. It will, it, twenty-four hours, uh, providing care, that feeding them, um, housing them, um, taking them to different activities, like to the aquatic center or the senior city and building. Uh, but, yeah, I mean, it, and we'll have, uh, live in person there, so it's twenty-four hours care.
Sir, uh, what's your relationship to the applicant?
To the applicant?
Yes.
I am the applicant.
Uh, the, says Lakisha Bede.
They're the owner of the house.
And Leonard Guzbi?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I guess too, uh, David, from the, uh, picture, is all this single story, I mean, it looks like there's some type of, I don't know, something above the garage. But I mean, no one will be, everyone, the elderly will be on that bottom floor.
Yes, sir, they, they can't go upstairs. It's, it's, uh, it's like a attic?
Yeah, I mean, I can't tell, it's above the garage.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
So the, all the, um, it's on the main level.
Well, that's, that's all I've got, thank you. And a, a question or two, going back to the, um, licensing. I've got a daughter that, um, is a different state, and they've had a, um, personal care home of questionable nature move in, and I've been following her for years. It's not like this one, but looking at the license requirements from the Department of Community Health, and then the business license from the county. So does that business license from the county, that renews every year, what's the renewal cycle?
Yes, every, every calendar year. And we can, you know, in this case and other cases, ask for certain paperwork to go along with that, just to see if it's complying with inspections and things like that.
Okay, and, and then ju- just to, under the recommendation, I guess, of following the, uh, marshal, fire marshal and building inspector, would I have to approve to, correct?
Yes.
Would those be the next steps?
That's standard practice for a business license, is for them to go out and inspect safety and things of that nature.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right. Just a little, a little worried when I saw that of personal care, what type it was, so thank you for clarification. That's got me.
Any further questions or comments? Do we have a recommendation?
I move to approve with staff conditions.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? Here none, all in favor, please signify. Any opposition? Here none. That is approved.
All right, this will be August twenty-eighth as well for a final decision on the Board of Commissioners.
All right, item number twelve, Application twenty-five dash thirteen S, Jared Baker, owner. Property located at sixty-five Moon Road, Land Lot twenty-six, first district, parcel number two seven zero zero one zero zero nine Z, consisting of four point nine three acres. The applicant is requesting a special exception to build a barn dominium on the AR one zone parcel per section five oh three B twenty-five. Mr. Allen?
Okay, uh, back to the barn dominiums, in this case sixty-five Moon Road. Um, we have the, as usual, requirements we have for this other barn dominiums. Um, I will make a note that the minimum lot size of five acres, in this case, this lot is four point nine three acres, which comes up to three thousand square feet short on the property. Uh, as director, I personally do not have a problem with that, uh, but I'll defer to the board, but I don't see that as an issue. If it was bigger, maybe, but uh, that's pretty small as far as a, a deficit there, so I don't have a problem with that. Um, also, the plans provided, um, they met the setback requirement, the roof pitch, uh, porch design, other items as well, they have met with their submitted drawings.
Okay.
We, we don't have a procedure for an administrative variance. Uh, and I understand what David's saying, that it's probably not that big a deal. But they will have to get a variance to approve it to go along with the special exception.
Okay. So an additional variance will be required? Yep, okay.
And, and just a quick calculation, that's ninety-eight percent of the, sorry, had to do the math.
Okay.
So it's, it's not a great variance.
And, and I understand, I understand it's not a great
No, but, but, but I understand too, the, the need for it.
We have no procedure for an administrative variance in the ordinance.
All right, do we have a motion to open, open the public hearing?
I move.
Yes, I can.
All right, all in favor? All right. Anybody signed up?
Yes, sir. We have, uh, Mr. Jared Baker, the applicant to speak.
I'm actually
Name and address to start off with, please, sir?
I represent the applicant. I'm his father, Darryl Baker, one sixty-five Haddock Point, Brooks, Georgia. Um, I'm actually a commercial developer on a construction company, both residential and commercial, and I own the, with two partners, the commercial real estate firm Randolph Williams. Um, and we represent properties here in Spalding and Griffin. My focus for the last thirty-five years has been on land development, project delivery and zoning entitlement. I've actually worked with your Community Development Director in another jurisdiction on a large net use project, and you guys got a great deal when you got David down here as your Community Development Director. Um, so I'm here today to speak on behalf of this project. Jared, in his request for a special exception based on the Spalding County UDO criteria regarding barn dominiums, but before I do this, we kind of hit the trifecta tonight. We're the third barn dominium. And I do believe, based on the, uh, uh, some of the things that I'm hearing tonight from a land use person that's done this for thirty-five years, I think you're gonna see a lot more of this. Matter of fact, there's an article that came out in one of the major publications for building that Georgia is an epicenter for barn dominiums. Twenty percent, fifteen to twenty percent of all current building permits in all jurisdictions in the state of Georgia are barn dominiums now. And they're single-family homes, guys, that, I mean, they, they allow you to do more things, bigger garages. They tend to be in more rural areas because of farm equipment and those kind of things, but this is, if, if you have to hear every barn dominium, you're gonna hear a lot of them coming up, because Spalding County has a ton of upside, especially the rural areas. These are perfect places for barn dominiums. And that's where I think Jared, it, they bought a bigger farm, he and a neighbor, and, and a friend of his bought a piece of an old dairy farm. And this is Jared's piece where his barn dominium goes. As such, um, the stated primary issue, I believe Jared has a primary issue and a secondary issue. And the secondary issue be, may be a non-issue. I don't think it applies or requires a special exception. I'm gonna ask Jared to give a couple of documents out to you that may help you, because we believe there's a precedent for his special exception. Um, on the acreage, and then on maybe a potential second issue. I don't see it as a requirement for a special exception, but that's a decision you guys will make. The stated primary issue requires barn dominiums to have a minimum lot size of five acres. Jared's lot is four point three, uh, four point nine three acres, which is seven one-hundredths of an acre short of the requirement. Now, we believe there's a justification for approval based on the following. A barn dominium is nothing more than a single-family home. And a single-family home doesn't have the same requirement. We understand a barn dominium does, it's a different requirement. Along Moon, Moon Road, there are forty-seven platted lots, which I've given you information on. Thirty-seven of these lots have residential structures. One has two shops and equipment barns. Twenty-eight residents on lots, or have lots less than five acres. You'll see the lot sizes in blue. Those are the actual residential lot sizes of the homes. And of that, thirteen are mobile homes, and so there's a precedent for single-family residences along Moon Road to sit on less than five acres, and I understand this is a barn dominium, so it's different. As a result, we respectfully request a special exception to allow Jared to build his barn dominium on his four point nine three acre site, and if this requires a variance, in my history, variances have to come back before planning commission and then go to county commission. I'm asking
No, they have, they have to go to the Board of Appeals.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Baker, and, and
Board of Appeals no longer exists.
No, y'all, y'all aren't out of business yet. We are consolidating them in order to comply with legislation that was passed two or three years ago. We are in process of eliminating the Board of Appeals. But as a standalone variance, it will stay either at the Board of Appeals, or it would stay here, as is currently in the new ordinance, if that, if that time takes place. What it, David can work with you on the schedule, and I recognize that there's not a lot of difference between four point nine three and five acres. I got that.
We appreciate that.
But, but um, we do not have a procedure in the ordinance for David to simply approve an administrative variance.
Fully understand.
And, and we've never had it, um, and there, there's valid reason in Spalding County for that. But again, I'm sympathetic to it. I understand. Um, but it, it would require a variance for the zero point seven
Okay.
Zero seven differential.
And I've got some additional, because again, this will, I guess, will go, I, well, I don't know. I've gotta talk to David to see how the variance works itself out, because we would have been scheduled, based on your decision tonight, to go to county commission October, I mean, August twenty-eighth, so I don't, we, I've gotta figure that out, time-wise.
It would probably be a couple of weeks after that, correct?
Okay.
Because BOA meets first part of the month. So you would be looking at the distance between the la, the fourth Thursday and the second Thursday of the next month.
Yeah, it's probably whatever that second Thursday of September is. But I'll call David this week to figure out what we need to do to apply for the variance. The second issue stated in the UDO that was noted by David um, as a reason for needing a special exception under AR one districts found in section B twenty-five, subsection G states all industrial um, or garage doors must be located on the side or back of the structure. We do not believe in Jared's case that this is needed, since the garage doors are on the actual side of the building. Based on the shape of the lot, Jared has pushed the home back to the rear back line, property line, and his home is angled with the front porch, door side of the house facing Moon Road, and the sides due to the angle of how it had to be pushed on the site, and to hit the two hundred foot setback to the closest corner to the, to the property line, it is cocked in an angle, but the side of that building, as you know, you can see on the site plan produced by Joey Scanlon, my civil engineer here in Griffin, shows that lot facing the adjacent residential neighboring lot. It is cocked, but it does face the adjacent lot to the south. Um, which is a heavily wooded lot buffering him between the neighbor to the south. The house is angled to meet the additional barn dominium requirements, as I stated, for a setback of two hundred feet from the property line, whereas a normal house would be required a hundred foot setback. As a result, we believe this requirement is met and should not require a special exception. Precedents for this approval, if being necessary, if this was considered a single-family home, which it is, and the front-facing garage doors would be allowed, on Moon Road alone, none of the homes, or barns, or equipment structures have front-facing garage doors. Again, we meet the criteria stated in the code, and we respectfully request this comment to be removed, and the special exception not be required for this item. If being necessary by the board and the Board of County Commission, we respectfully request approval of a special exception, since there's precedent already set along Moon Ro- Road of single-family residential residences having front-facing garage doors. Um, I'll give you a couple more additional reasons for approval that may help your decision. The construction of this home creases the tax base of the county. Currently, the property is taxed as ag land. This is a, at Jared's cost as a home builder, this is a seven hundred thousand dollar residence, and will, at the least, around the house, increase tremendously the property tax revenue for the lot. Jared is currently single, at least for now. There will be no impact on the schools from the tax revenue gain. Now, his mother doesn't like that, but, but it, that's where he is right now. As currently built, this structure will be within the top three largest homes. Own Moon Ho- Moon, Moon Road, with a valuation among the top three residences also, as far as residences go. The current, the house is currently designed, from a civil site perspective, meets all of the required Spalding County lot setbacks, and the home will improve the property values along Moon Road as they currently exist. And we appreciate your consideration, and we'll answer any questions you may have.
So just um, one notation there, just from the quick review of your site plan there. So it, it appears that the way you're positioning the house and putting it on that north, and you're kind of keeping it in your, the area is kind of, it's like a field area and preserving the wooded area of the site, which is really gonna be that side. You're talking about where your doors are, right? Okay.
And part of that layout too, just being honest, is because you've got septic on that site, you have certain soils that are required for your septic, and that's where those soils are.
Yep, okay. All right. Anything else from you fellows for the applicant?
Well, I just wanted to mention, uh, when you were talking about the, the flood of barn dominiums headed our way in Nationwide, I was not chuckling at you. I was just chuckling all from part of a TV show that started this years ago, so just, who knows what you see on TV?
An additional piece of information for you guys is there are now in the state of Georgia over three hundred barn dominium contractors in the state, over three hundred. So Georgia is seen, is being seen as the boon and the epicenter of barn dominium development.
Okay.
Jared, you got anything to say about this?
Please.
Go ahead.
You got anything to add?
No, sir. I think he covered it very well. Um, again, I mean, I think, I guess it's gonna do nothing but increase the value of properties and homes in the area. Um, I mean, I think it's gonna look immaculate when it's done. Um, it's, it is a barn dominium, but I mean, as far as the finishes that we're using on the exterior, um, a lot of people go with the typical art panel on a roof and siding. I'm doing standing seam metal roofing on the actual roof itself, wraparound porch, all the exterior doors, what y'all call is industrial doors, are all gonna be real cedar wood, um, with the stone wraparound and everything else. So I think it's gonna be a good home, and it's gonna suit me well. So, thank you.
All right, appreciate it.
Could I address, Mr. Baker, I was gonna tell you, one, when we drafted this, you have to understand I, our perspective. Uh, regrettably, uh, in Spalding County, we have found that many people dumb down and move our quality to the lowest common denominator. And as I said earlier, the purpose of the additional restrictions we put in were to keep us from having to approve what were essentially Maywall warehouse buildings under the guise of the definition of a barn dominium. We are cognizant that the acreage was larger, but that was based upon the premise that if you had a home in, in AR one, which was a three acre tract, and you were bringing in equipment, and you were having the bays and having more equipment there, the likelihood would be that you were going to be doing something on that property with that, so therefore the acreage requirement was increased. Um, and like I say, the goal was to make the barn dominium be compatible with the other properties. We view them as a, we view them as an advancement and another housing option that didn't exist, at least to my knowledge, fifteen, ten, fifteen years ago. And we want to accommodate those, but like I say, we, we always have that underlying concern that what gets approved will not necessarily be of the quality that we would like to see. That's not a reflection on your plan at all.
And we appreciate, respectfully, we appreciate this. I will, from land use perspective, and zoning perspective, just give you one little tidbit, because David is one of the most thorough people on that.
Da- David has
I didn't pay in Mercedes. Yeah, no, listen, David, David is, when we worked together in Jonesboro on a big mixed-use project, and he, I worked in, went at Cobb, City of Atlanta, and he's one of the best I've worked with. I mean, you guys got a gem, you got David.
David has recommended client, approval for clients I've represented in various jurisdictions, and he has also recommended denial on behalf of clients that I represent, so.
Actually, the project we worked on got rezoned, but he said it got denied. So, and David and I work pretty closely. But one thing that you may wanna look at, because from a construction standpoint and a zoning standpoint, primary or composite material is steel, brick, stone and tilt wall. So, you know, to help you to keep somebody from really taking you to task on that, that may be something you wanna look at, because that is the definition of primary material. And I could see somebody getting upset because they didn't get the design they wanted, and they come back and say, hey, this is primary material, this is standard, so just FYI. That's not what Jared's doing, but
I understand.
Yep, and again, we're glad to have all these other opportunities, and we'd like for it to be something good in Spalding County, and they say, man, they do great barn dominiums in Spalding County.
I mean, I did do a parking lot expansion, gross, just like
Okay.
Okay, um, anybody else signed up?
No, sir.
Okay, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move.
Second.
All right, all in favor? David, staff report, recommendation?
Uh, it is approval. Um, I do understand the variance process we must go through, uh, nevertheless for the with the, you know, condition upon that being approved and heard in, in September, I do recommend this for approval. Clearly, the doors he was talking about is on the side and not the front-facing, as I interpret, the front of a building, so that's not an issue. Um, from the drawings, it looks like a, a quality drawing, uh, meeting roof pitch requirements, things of that nature. It shows, uh, a stone veneer, um, on the act, on the front and on the sides, up to where you hit the garage doors, so um, I will make a note of that. But I, I in general recommend it for approval, of course, conditional upon the, the variance being approved, which I'd be shocked if it didn't, but I've been shocked before, so.
Does that mean you're gun shy?
All right. Anything else? Do we have a recommendation?
Well, I move to approve with staff conditions and the need for the variance for the, um, acreage size.
Mr. Bryant, seconded by Mr. Hardwick. Any further review and discussion? Here are none. All in favor, please signify. All right, that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Look forward to, to another quality barn dominium. All right, number 13, proposed text amendment to Spalding County Code of Ordinances, Appendix Four Zoning, added new Appendix P Historic Property Preservation Ordinance. All right, we talked about this earlier, but David, go ahead and.
Yes, we, for the benefit of the public, we did have a workshop that started at five where we discussed this in depth. Uh, this is a holdover from, uh, discussing it in June, and now it's before you, again, for a full public hearing and consideration. Um, basically, this ordinance seeks with the first three properties in the county, which are nationally registered historic buildings on there, plus the property in this ordinance to preserve those properties. This is in line with our community work program where we discuss having a historic preservation ordinance. Um, as we said in the workshop and I said before, if you're, if you don't have the resolve to preserve these three buildings from the start, you might as well just go ahead and forget the rest and strike that from the community work program. So this is the, the start of this, hopefully, and it seeks to preserve the buildings and the properties with which they reside on, because to me, they go hand in hand. The integrity of the building is also tied in with the integrity of the property itself.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
I move.
Right?
Second.
Second, Mr. Bryant. All in favor? Do we have anybody signed up for this one?
Uh, yes, sir. We have the attorney present, Kirk.
Members of the commission, my name is Kirk Felstool, here from, uh, 1105 West Peachtree Street in Atlanta, with Smith, Gamble, and Russell on behalf of the McElroy's who own the Gassert property. Um, and if you will promise to remember everything I said, I will promise not to talk too much. And, um, and, and actually.
It's Gassert.
I'm sorry?
It is Gassert.
Thank you, uh, the Gassert property. Um, what I'm, what I'm gonna try to do is simply just summarize the basic points, and that is that this is really not a historic preservation ordinance. It's trying to, it's doing more about the property than it is with the buildings. And, uh, we are all for preserving the building and have put money into it and, uh, have intended all along. We do agree with you that this is a historic building, but the property, there's nothing historic about it. Uh, what, what ends up being the issue are about those things that are not about the building. Um, n- n- number one, this becomes its own zoning ordinance. It is restricting the use of the property. And on, in terms of the building itself, here's, here's what is allowed, and remember, it's on five acres of property, it was 10 acres. On five acres, you could have a con- conventional construction building, so one building on five acres. You could have a local, state, or federal government building. You could have crop growing. You could have agriculture, and you could have a publicly owned and operated recreational park. So that's three out of the five of those are effectively government building. That, that is what is allowed. And as I'd said in the public, in the, in the discussion in the work session, what should be happening is the opposite. We should be encouraging uses on this property that help support what are expensive, difficult to operate, uh, historic buildings. Second thing is that we are not allowed to rezone this property to anything other than what would be the three, three zonings that are allowed, and even they are restricted, agritourism, uh, office buildings that are restricted, and, um, uh, and the neighborhood commercial, again, restricted. So they are too restrictive and it effectively becomes a zoning ordinance in and of itself. Second thing is that there are now arbitrary limits on the size of the property. There's no, there's no rational reason to limit this property size to whether it's 10 acres or five acres and have restrictions on the, um, what, what becomes kind of the perimeter of the property, especially because this piece of property is the, the historic home is in the middle of the, um, uh, of what is a 70 acre, uh, piece of property. Um, and, um, and then the last thing are these efforts to restrict not just the, not just the building where the property is located, but if it's divided, it is, it is the adjacent property. So there are additional buffers that we've talked about which further restrict the property, but they are on the adjacent property. Uh, and second, architectural features which are designed for, if it's a commercial use, to look like the building, which makes the commercial uses infeasible. And so for that reason, we would request that this, uh, uh, that the planning commission recommend that the, that the draft as it's current, as it currently exists, uh, be denied and not go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens, is there anybody else signed up?
No, sir.
Okay. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I move.
Second.
All right. All in favor? Okay. So we're closed. Let's turn it over back over to you, Mr. Allen.
Okay. Uh, so we discussed this at length in the workshop, but I'd like to bring up a few points, um, in regards to what Mr. Felstool said, uh, during the workshop and during tonight as well. Um, as far as the McElroy property and this being specifically targeted toward that, uh, I can understand how he would think that way. However, the time that McElroy withdrew, the final time, was in November of last year for the rezoning. I did not hear from them again until May of this year to redo the rezoning again. During that time, I was working on this ordinance and several other ordinances. I got emails to correspondence to prove it, that this was being worked on in the late winter, early spring, way before May, so keep that in mind. Um, also too, I'm, I'm kind of confused with some of the things he said and also some of the things I've also received from them in terms of, uh, things that would seem to align exactly with this ordinance. Uh, they submitted a plat, um, several months back, and this plat is here. It shows them dividing off a separate lot for, around the protected house themselves. So that's their proposal to do that. Not been approved yet, but, uh, that was their proposal. Also, during the rezoning hearing, speaking of adjacent properties and how they look in regards to, um, this property, um, they themselves, again, I did not do this, but they themselves proposed, um, materials for the, um, gas station that was denied to make it look nice adjacent to this farmhouse. So they seem to kind of curiously be in line with many goals of this ordinance in terms of dividing off property to surround it, in terms of influencing how materials on adjacent pieces of property look compared to the farmhouse. So seems like we're in agreement. Um, also, um, I contacted them, as I did the other two owners of the other historic properties, I contacted them in the same exact manner. I've had discussions with them as well as with, uh, Mr. Felstool here about the properties. So there has been open lines of communication here. Uh, there's been consideration by the, the board for this, and some changes have been made to make it more reasonable. It's always been thought of as wanting to preserve it, but not to create a huge burden for the property owner of these. And yes, I do believe it's the property as well as the building. You can use the Alamo as an example in San Antonio. That's pretty much, the integrity of that is kind of gone when you're surrounding it with skyscrapers. And I'm seeking to have some setbacks here to keep the integrity of the property that the building is sitting on. You can't just have a building floating, it's, it's on a property. So how do you improve the integrity of that? Um, we've had, even in Pike County recently, they, on their Highway 19 overlay, they just approved something that said the colors of adjacent parcels next to a parcel they're proposing have to, uh, coordinate with each other and be in harmony. So we have precedents for that. We have some centennial farms, I've seen ordinances where they are approved and there's an ordinance for them, and this one used to be a centennial farm, it's not now, but there's scenic vistas that are preserved, so it's not, you know, coming in conflict with the property the farm is on. So there is precedence for preserving views and integrity of, uh, properties that are valued. So I'll just state all that, and I do recommend approval of the ordinance.
Okay. All right. What else we have? Questions, comments on your side?
Well, excuse me, I'll weigh in. Um, well, I do think the ordinance is proposed is a good start. Excuse me. I am wondering, do we need to just, for right now, do we need to limit it to just three national register properties? Because, um, you know, Newton brought up some good points with some ordinances to look at with the city, and I'm trying to even look at the other stuff I've got here, e- even then from, uh, Historical Preservation Division. And, um, I, I think it's a good start. Uh, it's not gonna get us to the finish line.
No.
But, I mean, I, I think it's, it's, it's reasonable, good start for us. We're not Macon, we're not Columbus, we're certainly not Savannah. And I do agree, the, uh, National Register, those are, those were, I think, all applied back for in the 1970s. They've all got that status that is onerous from what, uh, hearing from, uh, Kirby and what little bit I've been aware of. Cause I, I'll admit, I took a deep dive about a year ago into this. Um, and I've got some extra interest in working more on this, but as far as that, um, 200 feet goes, um, in the terminology and pulling this from the Georgia archaeological standards, there's something called an area of potential effects, APE. And it does describe it as the geographic areas or areas within and undertaking, which means what you're trying to get applied for, directly or indirectly cause changes in the character or use of historic properties, if any such properties exist. And then it goes on to say, examples of effect can be direct, indirect, cumulative, visual, atmospheric, audible, or beneficial. And I view that 200 feet is, uh, bare minimum. Cause when you look at the properties in context and not to get too much on a tangent, um, you do have to consider the surroundings. You can't just, uh, isolate the building and put it anywhere. All three of those properties were probably a lot larger in their day and they've consolidated down to whatever remains. So I mean, I think 200 feet is reasonable, and then trying to protect the integrity of, of visually of that area of potential effect, or I think it if it's a neutral zone, kind of keeping it where nothing happens that takes away from the character should be done. Um, so I, I think it's a good start for us. If we are gonna try to get to that qualified local government status that, um, opens up, uh, grants and other resources, we've got some more work to do. Personally scratching my head, I don't know if I want to review a lot of historical properties like Newton is proposing, but that, that's not for today.
Right.
But, but I, I agree with what everything David has said, and I don't, um, I don't, I don't think we should not do it. Put it this way, I think we should, so.
All right. Mr. Harris?
I'd like to echo everything Bill has said. And for too long, uh, we have not, uh, I started to say appreciate it, not even acknowledged some of the historic parts of this county. Uh, and as new people have moved here, they don't have any idea how historic some of these are.
Right.
Uh, I've done a good bit of work out at Camp Stevens, and, uh, it was a nine acre encampment, and every Confederate soldier north of Macon trained there. Uh, once you know about these places, and once you have an appreciation for them, you say, why didn't somebody do something? So I think this is a great start. And, uh, I don't want to be part of the generation to which another generation can point and say, why didn't they didn't do something?
Okay. Mr. Doug, you got anything?
I could play devil's advocate, but I won't.
Well, you can.
No, 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 pass.
Okay. All right. Um, just a couple of things then, uh, that I think we do need to consider. Um, first off, again, if we're gonna put things in there like 200 feet and lay out and, um, speci- specific measurements, then I think that, that at least the, um, the properties we're looking at should comply. Um, I don't know that those dimensions were correct on what was provided to us, um, on the smokehouse, mill house and smokehouse, but, but right now, it appears that, um, that what we're saying would not apply there, because it is less than the 200 feet. And so I think that should be considered. Um, a comment based on what, um, the attorney had mentioned there, uh, he was mentioning, uh, just some random, uh, areas that we were looking at, like the five acres, but we've already talked about that along with the barn dominiums. You know, you, you gotta come up with something and you have to go with it. Um, I think the five acres is reasonable and the five acres is within, um, compliance with the, uh, areas that we're looking at. Um, generally speaking, when somebody has a larger property and they're looking to further development, develop it, um, it certainly makes sense and it behooves them to try to make it all tie together, to make it, um, complementary of the various developments they're gonna have on there. Um, I think what they have shown, um, previously, um, their wanting to move toward that, it looks like, with what they had presented, um, and I think that could certainly apply. We, we may want to look at, um, some of the specific wording there, but I, but again, I think that, um, that we're not, you know, asking for, for too much in the fact that we are talking about, you know, hardy plank and wood siding and things like that, when we're talking about exterior building materials. Um, of course, they, they didn't have the hardy plank back then, but a lot of these old, older buildings were wood. Um, and, you know, again, it's to try to complement, make it look, um, similar, so I appreciate that. Um, I do feel though, that also that, um, based on some of, um, Newton's, um, supplemental information, um, and the requirement of the HPC and how that's gonna work and how that needs to be put into place, um, I think it would be important to go ahead and get that in, in this, um, along with if we're gonna, how we're gonna consider the other historical sites, um, before maybe we go ahead and, and vote on something that we're gonna have to come back and, and make an amendment to here in the near future. Um, so those are my thoughts and comments on it. I think it's a great start. Um, I think we said you have to start somewhere and work it out, but we just have to work out the details where what we're saying does apply and does make sense and, uh, and so anyway, that's, that's my thoughts. Anything further? Hey, you want to be the devil's advocate? Okay. All right, well, do we have a, a recommendation from the board?
I'll make a motion to approve.
To adopt, I'll second that.
Is that with the?
Yeah, with, with, with staff recommendations, uh, right, right.
And Newton supplements and stuff we discussed? We good with those?
You don't, you don't have an ordinance beyond what David has.
You don't, you don't have an ordinance beyond what David has.
Right, right. Yeah, cause, cause the way-
People have to come back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, if, if this is approved as is, this, this has to come back to you to put a process in.
And yeah, that, that's, that's my intent with what, what we've got now. To approve is what we have now.
Okay.
I mean, I, I can discuss more if we need to, but if necessary.
All right, so motion by Bill, all right, do we have a second on that?
Frank, you have a second?
I second it, man.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, here none, all in favor, please signify. All right, those in opposition? Three, one. All right.
This will be forwarded to the commissioners on August twenty eighth.
Okay, that takes us to item fourteen. Um, proposed text amendment to appendix four. Zoning ordinance Spalding County Article five through eleven, retain the necessary corrections, clarifications, improvements to uses and standards in certain portions of the zoning ordinance. All right, Mr. Allen?
So, last but certainly not least, we have more uh zoning sections. You've already reviewed and recommended for approval, Articles one through four last month. They've already been sent to the commissioners. This is Articles five through eleven, which is basically the rest of the re- uh residential zonings, AR one, AR two, AT, R one, R one A, R two, R two A, R three, R four, R five. Um, R one through R five are, has that use word cookie cutter, but they're pretty much the same as, as, all the same in terms of the wording, just a little bit different size standards on them. Uh, AR two and AT are a little bit unique, but not so much. Uh, the most important changes are in AR one, and we will certainly go over those. Um, I have a feeling uh what will be discussed most tonight is livestock and guns. Uh, and they're certainly welcome to have their comments on that. I will say this, that if, when we get to the subject of gun ranges, this is for only future, any future shooting ranges that are in AR one zoning that are proposed. There are certain standards for those. Does this not affect any existing gun range such as uh Cherokee Rose or Griffin Gun Club? Nevertheless, if they wanna speak on it, they certainly can, but I just wanna clarify that, so. Also, the livestock changes have gone through many changes since first reviewed by you guys back in March. And I think we come to a good compromise on that, a good common sense compromise. Um, had several people review it in the, uh, with the citizens and I think we come up with a good compromise there. So, I just speak out on those two issues, I think they're about to come up, so.
Okay. All right. Do you have a motion to open public hearing?
I'll move.
Second.
And just a reminder, there's twenty minutes per side.
Okay. All right, all in favor? Okay, Ms. Ty?
Um, yes, sir. The first person to sign up for the text amendment zoning ordinance is Melinda Sipke, Sipka? Sorry.
Okay, name and address, please?
Hi, my name is Melinda Sybil. I'm at fifty-three eighty West McIntosh. The proposed text amendments to appendix four adds many restrictions and changes that affects livelihoods and investments and property rights necessitating a transparent and thoughtful process that fully considers citizens' concerns. My focus is with AR one uses for horses on three plus, on three acres plus. The original stated basis for the restrictions on livestock was the concern for excessive animals on small lots and subdivisions. The excessive animals was not a major concern for A one, AR one lots with three acres or more. AR one for years has been a minimum of three acres with agriculture and livestock as a permitted use without numerical limits. The new proposed zoning use for livestock in AR one rightfully allows for the continued unrestricted use for livestock on three acres plus outside of major platted subdivisions with interior public streets. However, even though horses are defined as livestock by federal and state law, the proposal for horses is more restrictive than other livestock. The basis for this restriction was stated as if you can afford horses, you can afford a few more acres for them, which is arbitrary and raises questions under equal protection principles and the need for horses to run, which is subjective, and both lack a connection to public health, safety, and welfare. Furthermore, the subjective husbandry requirement conflicts with certain provisions of OCGA law. Horses also provide economic impact for their owners and surrounding businesses. A pop, established horseman guidelines recommend one horse per acre when only pasture is available and no feeding supplements are given. Less acreage is needed when feeding hay and grain. The current proposed limitation of one horse on a minimum of three acres and one additional uh acre for each horse disproportionately affects the small horse farm owner. Smaller horse farms would be unfairly impacted by this arbitrary limit, leading to the diminished use and value of their property. Furthermore, some owners of horses and ponies focus solely on horses and have less animals than other livestock farms. Additionally, some communities inside and outside of major subdivisions have HOA agreements restricting most forms of livestock and only allow horses. Further horse restrictions would impact those properties owners unfairly and disproportionately. A fair, fair, well-defined zoning code that supports Spalding citizens, including current and future horse owners and their investments is the focus. We respectfully request that zoning for AR one, three acres or more continue to profit, continue to permit horses without a numerical limitation or in the very least allow one horse per acre, one horse per one acre and provide exceptions for HOA covenants inside and outside major platted subdivisions where horses are specifically allowed with three acres or more. Horse farms, large and small, are an integral part of a county's rural charm and provide positive economic impact for the county and should be preserved as well as protecting the investment and property rights of Spalding citizens and horse owners.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next.
Robert Bodron, Bodron?
Uh, Bob Bodron, fourteen hundred Bertie Road. And uh, I'm here to talk about the uh shooting range ordinances. I know they're for the future, but I've been a competitive shooter for forty-four years. I started actually as a freshman in college going up to the old River Bend Gun Club on the north side of Atlanta. And uh, in all of those forty-four years, every match has always either started early in the morning or at night. And one of the things in this document just blocks every one of those. There's a lot of things in here, I came up with ten in a brief reading of it this afternoon, ten items that need to be uh modified or corrected or deleted. And uh, I, I won't go through the whole list right now. But what I would like to do is volunteer to help come up with a good ordinance. I have a lot of experience with that too. I was an FAA engineer, government engineer for thirty years. And uh, during that time, I worked on orders quite a bit. I followed orders, I interpreted building codes and orders. And the last few years, I actually worked on writing the new sighting order because I objected to the one they proposed. And so, they said, well, form a work group and come up with what's right. And I, I'm available to help do something like that here with a little bit of help from other people in the shooting community. We could come up with a much better package that would serve the county and preserve the shooting community's ability to do the sports that we do and the practice and all the other things that go with the shooting clubs and range businesses. So, I'm gonna just volunteer for that. I don't know what, you know, procedures you have for accepting outside help, but I sure would like to make this a good order and, and get it uh approved.
Okay, well, appreciate you providing us with that and uh, and all printed help. Sure do. All right? All right?
Next, we have Roy McLean.
I can't hear you guys at all, so I don't know what's going on with the sound system, but please get it fixed before the, the next one. It's not fair to the people that are trying to watch this on, on video. I'm Roy McLean, Amelia Road, Griffin, Georgia. Bob is too um, too shy to tell you, he's a civil engineer by trade and training. So, uh, he was responsible for big towers all over. He knows what he's talking about when it comes to engineering. And on the same note that he, he volunteered to help, I would think that you guys would, could put together a little working group of technical experts that know about ranges. I, I'm not trying to belittle anybody here, but I'm guessing none of y'all have ever built a range. Well, by trade and training, I'm a range technical training team advisor certified by the NRA, the only one in the state to build ranges and to go and testify about ranges and, and uh, when there are accidents to look into the cause and effect. Um, I, I have looked at the proposed, even though if it doesn't, um, doesn't uh affect the, the two ranges that you mentioned, Griffin Gun Club or Cherokee Rose, these are just the things I came up with that a range cannot survive in a commercial world and try to, try to um, to, to make it work. Uh, I've been on hundreds of ranges, probably thousands. Uh, I've built about a dozen ranges. So, I, I understand that. And from a civil engineering standpoint, you have a half a dozen people in the, in the local community that know how to move dirt, but they don't have the technical expertise for how high, how thick, how much. Almost every requirement in here is an open-ended, um, there's no definitions, there's, there's no um, understanding of what the specifics are. So, i- it really leaves a range operator at the, the whim of the county. If, if you guys are uh in a, in a good mood and you decide that you like the way a certain thing goes, then that's fine. But if the next group that comes in behind you has a different view, then it's not fine. And that's not a fair thing for the public. There need to be standards established and they need to be um workable. And, and none, uh, none of these, there's not a single line here that I haven't found something in here that completely torpedoes a commercial operation or a private range for that matter. So, I would ask you to put together a working group of knowledgeable individuals um, and let them advise on technical issues. Then it's gonna come before you again and you can approve that. But, but don't start off with something that we can't live with and then make us try to adjust it. Let's come up with something we can live with and then if it needs to be adjusted, we can do that. Um, none of this affects hunting leases and there are several in this county. And they're gonna do what they wanna do anyway. And so, it's not fair to treat them one way and treat ranges another. None of it's gonna affect residents who can shoot in their own backyards. And I would tell you that the vast majority of concerns that the Sheriff's Department's gonna get involved with are gonna be people shooting in their backyards, not on established ranges. And I think there's something like twenty-five in this, in this county. Um, only the two big ones were, were mentioned. So, that's all I've got prepared. But again, like Bob, I will throw my hat in the ring and tell you that if you wanna put together a little working group, if you wanna have some technical expertise, I've, I've offered a half a dozen or so names to the county, a particular county commissioner that could put together a working group like that. But I think it's gonna have to come from y'all to ask for help in this area. Um, and I think the help is here. You've just gotta let us know that we can come in and give you a hand. And, and again, you're gonna approve or disapprove what we put together anyway. It's gotta come through here. Um, so I, that's, unless you have questions for me, that's all I've got. But uh, ask for help if you, if you don't know what's going on.
All right, thank you very much. Anybody else?
Rachel Stroud.
Hello?
Rachel Stroud, five fifty Amelia Road. Um, good evening, everybody. I'm here tonight primarily to address the proposed minimum development standards for outdoor shooting ranges. But um, just to be honest, many of these broader zoning ordinances, changes that are, uh, have been listed are pretty deeply concerning to me and really leave me questioning the overall direction of Spalding County. Um, but anyway, leading up to tonight, I have been told repeatedly that um, this planning commission is really just advisory. So, my advice to you all is that we just completely scrap this minimum standard list for outdoor ranges. Um, it's really unacceptable to be mentioned under any of the zoning codes. Um, so, similar to Roy, uh, these, these issues are, are very broad and um, leave a lot of interpretation up to folks that might not be as familiar with ranges. Um, specifically under items twenty-eight and twenty-nine, I don't believe that these are about reasonable safety measures. They seem to be more outright government overreach, um, talking about county commissioner-approved insurance certificates, um, county-controlled buffers and barriers, noise restrictions that exceed the current noise ordinances, no shooting before eleven AM or after dark, um, and an annual license that can be revoked after just three noise complaints. But who's verifying that those noise complaints are coming from the actual facility and not from a neighbor who's hunting, um, who's able to be out there at the, at the break of dawn? So, um, while creating barriers for legal activities uh based on hypo, oh, excuse me. Instead of discouraging these facilities, I believe that we should be working to foster more of them. Outdoor shooting ranges provide a controlled, safe environment for citizens to exercise their second amendment rights and receive training that makes gun ownership safer for everyone. Supporting these spaces not only improves public safety, but it also brings economic benefits to Spalding County by attracting tourism competitions and training events. And I think that we should overall be encouraging smart developments of these outdoor shooting facilities and not regulating them out of existence. Um, as Bob and Roy both mentioned, we do have quite a few experts here in the community who have taken range development courses, myself being one of them, um, range safety officers, engineers, and other consultants. And they're already and willing to help uh better shape this policy. So, I encourage you to engage them and to use them. Um, but the standards as written uh really just need to be reworked from the ground up, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Amanda Gilbert.
Um, Amanda Gilbert, um, one-one-two-one Amelia Road. Um, I wanted to thank y'all first um for the work that y'all have done with working with the community and listening um on a lot of the farm animal, um, and the, with the AR with that. Um, so we appreciate that um you were able to listen and to try to work and meet in the middle on some of that. Um, I, I coming here as a, a neighbor of a gun club. Um, some of the people in the audience here today, they are, um, also came here as neighbors. They didn't wanna speak, but they came as neighbors of a gun club. Um, we uh live near the Griffin Gun Club. Um, I read this ordinance, um, when I was reading about the farm livestock and I was really concerned. Um, um, I know I've seen y'all when we came for the village node and when we talked to commissioners, we were told over and over, um, y'all don't have to worry, the gun club doesn't have to worry, they're protected noise ordinance, they're protected noise ordinance. And we heard tonight, like, okay, the Griffin Gun Club doesn't have to worry, Cherokee Rose doesn't have to worry, but we're here worrying also for future gun clubs. Um, I read this ordinance and I said, oh my goodness, this sounds like a way to be able to legally shut them down. Um, three viol- they're, they're required to have a business license. Well, some of these gun clubs, they're nonprofits, so they don't have business license, but this will make them have a business license. And then if they have three violations, there is revoked, legal way to shut them down. Which I don't know how, I don't know what the viol- the rules are for like proving that it is this, the gun club that's making this. I know on our road, um, I hear gunshots, it's not the gun club. It's private landowners that are up past ten o'clock at night shooting their um own guns. And I'm not saying, I don't wanna take away their guns, but um, you know, it's, it's gonna be hard to prove that it's them when there's people that can legally shoot early in the morning. I know that they do tournaments, if they have to start eleven, that's really late. We're not making people like not be able to mow their grass or play music before eleven. And then in, and then in the winter at dark, um, they have a lot of kids that have, I've been there for meetings. They have kids that are shooting after school for their clubs. Um, it's well-lit where they shoot. Um, so that's gonna hinder their clubs from being able to meet. Um, it's positive for them to be able to have these clubs. It brings in people to our county, um, to, to these, to these clubs. It's a positive thing for our county. Um, let's see, um, it sounded when I read it like it was intended to shut them down. I'm not saying that is the intention, it gave off that, and that this intention. I'm, even if it's not the intention- Um, even if it's not the intention, that could be a consequence, like an unintended consequence. There's no clear way that I could see of how you prove that they were the ones that violated the noise, like once it stops. I don't know if you have to catch them in the action, but if there's others, um, you say it wouldn't apply to them, but I don't know, like, I know I had talked in emails about like the grandfathering in. Well, what if they want to move locations? Will it apply to them then? What if they buy more land near them? Will it apply to them then? It might, um, what if they want to expand? So, what about the other gun clubs? So, or what if someone else? I don't, I don't like reads it differently that comes in to the role down the line and says, oh, no, you should have been held to this ordinance. So, I, I'm not really clear about how to prove that they, they don't have to be held up to that ordinance. But I, but I think we need to think beyond that to the few, to the other ones. And I think that you have a lot, a lot, a lot of great people here that have a lot of knowledge that can help you do something that will help protect what you're wanting to, to do with the county, to protect the county, but also to have this great service within the county. And yeah, I, I, I just think that we need to, to start over and, um, involve, involve our experts within our community in this. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We have others sign up?
Yes, we do.
We are at fifteen minutes into this, so there's a twenty-minute time limit, so please make it short.
We have three, three more people to sign up.
Okay.
Kane Shavers. Okay. Jason McSwain. Thank you. Roy Harris. Thank you. That's all we have signed up.
Okay. And thank you all for your comments. And, uh, again, certainly things that we want to consider and, uh, appreciate those of you willing to help and, and as this moves forward. All right, with that, um, I'll take, you know, a motion to close public here. So, move. All in favor? All right. Mr. Allen, back to you, sir.
All right, uh, so yes, there's a large focus on AR one usage, which is fine. However, we do have the other ones as well, the R ones, R twos that I mentioned before. Uh, we've reviewed a lot of this. I'm, I'm set aside the issues we heard right now and go to the other ones for a minute. We've reviewed a lot of this in the past several months. We first reviewed this in this same room in late March. It's gone through some workshops as well. I think I've addressed most of the issues, um, in terms of wording and things of that nature. These articles are a lot better organized than they used to be as well. Putting, there's some standards that were like scattered all throughout, kind of bring them together. So, I think that's been improved as well. Some of the R ones, R twos, some, some uses did not really belong in those districts have been taken out. Some have been put as special exceptions. There is one issue I need to ask you guys about and it's not a big deal either way. Went ahead and put the frequency of accessory buildings in here. That was an ordinance y'all had considered separately for a couple of years. That is in here now based on what, how y'all worded that ordinance from a couple of years ago. However, um, and this can be easily taken out, I didn't really have a standard for it yet, but maximum building size of accessory buildings on certain sized lots, like I'm talking the real small lots. Didn't know if you wanted to put that in there or lay it aside for now and just say, forget about it. We got a frequency of buildings, we don't need a size restriction as well. So, that's one question for you guys.
Question, frequency you mean by like number of?
Yes. And this is on, this is on the super tiny lots, you know, not having four or five.
Page where I saw that.
Right, four or five barns on a very tiny lot. Obviously, the bigger ones, there's no restrictions. So, I'm not sure if the size restriction maximum is necessary right now. I can easily take that out. Agriculture, we've greatly improved that. I appreciate the citizens' response to that. In AR one, um, and she's right, the current definition of agriculture is on lots of three acres or more. That is being changed to not have a acreage thing because it conflicts with what we have here on the large and small livestock. You can have a certain number of, uh, each kind allowed now, uh, up to one acre, two acres, so on and so forth. So, that three acre thing really conflicted with that, so that is out. Horses and believe it or not, you can have horses and chickens and rabbits and other of the residential zonings. And they always said, and this is just, this hasn't changed, um, you got to have at least three acres to have that first horse. Now, they had a minimum of three more acres to have another horse, so on and so forth. So, we have compromised on that and said a minimum of three acres for the first horse and an additional horse for each additional acre. So, that has actually been improved. It's less restrictive than it was. I don't have a problem in AR one of going to one horse per acre and dropping to three, just for AR one, not for the other ones. That kind of goes along with, um, the cows, the larger livestock as well, which you see written there. On that note, um, horses, I, I understand how it seems like they've been singled out. But what we had when we first did the, uh, livestock and crops and all that, the first, uh, round of revisions was, needed a lot of work. It was just a starting point. And we had a lot of people in here, including Ms. Gilbert and some others, that were concerned about it affecting their subsistence agriculture, i.e. egg production, milk production, so on and so forth. So, that is why there was a different standard for horses. They're not part of that, they're, you know, recreation, riding hobbies, things of that nature, not really obviously any kind of milk or egg production or anything like that. So, that's why they were, you know, put on a separate category. That's the only reason for that. Nevertheless, I don't have a problem with it being one horse per acre and just leave it at that. I think the other ones are reasonable for the large and small livestock. So, I think we've worked out some good new standards for that that are, strike a proper balance. On the shooting ranges, I would like to propose tonight, and it's up to the board, um, to do this or not, that, um, if you move AR one and the rest of the zoning districts forward to the Board of Commissioners, that the references to the shooting gun range standards be stricken out and that be, um, a future workshop to be determined. And get that involved and have that as treated as a separate ordinance, much like we've done event centers and some other things. To have it as a separate document with different standards, ironed out at a future date. But I don't, we're, time is of the essence with these other zoning districts. And I don't want to hold the rest of AR one hostage just because of that. So, I would ask that you consider carving that out if you approve the rest of it for the move forward. And we can address that at a later date.
Okay.
As long as everybody understands too, that the way this is worded now, this is a kind of something that's peculiar to the Spalding code, but nevertheless, as long as people understand this, then we will move on. There is a provision in here and it's at the back of every single zoning district, not just AR one. It says all uses not permitted within AR one district are specifically prohibited in that district. In other words, if it's not mentioned in here, not allowed. Currently, shooting gun ranges are not allowed, as they're not listed. So, there is the ultimate, uh, not making them possible because it wasn't mentioned, period. So, I just want to let people know about that. But, uh, I recommend striking that out now to come up with better standards for everybody involved, not just the, the people engaging in the activity, but for other residents as well and to not delay this because of that, so.
David, one clarification. The restriction is for outdoor ranges. We have a provision that allows a public indoor range.
Yes.
Shooting facility to be developed. And I believe it's in C, C one.
I think.
I would have to check, but what, what the restriction is for outdoor ranges. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Allen?
That's it.
Mr. Galloway?
No, I would, I think I would ask you to vote on each article individually because when this goes to BOC, we're going to have to have, in my opinion, separate ordinances ultimately. And that permits us to go ahead and have that done before and have the ordinance in essentially a adaptable form when it gets to BOC. We didn't do that with one through four and we probably should have because we're going to have to go back and do other work.
Okay. All right. Any other comments and questions from you, fellas? Yes, sir.
Um, well, I had a, I was trying to find a reference and I'm lost with, but I did find one page. If y'all could look at page eight fifty-eight in our book. Cause I made some notes and I'm trying not to do too much that I think, and I don't know what ordinance this is under, David or Newton. But I, I did make a note, um, I think it's under AR one. But this, this shows some language that, that I can't make sense of. So, this is under the raising and keeping of poultry, chickens, turkey, ducks, geese, but not commercial grade.
This is in R one zoning, what you're reading from.
Okay, all right, thank you. Cause the, the same comment will apply, I think it's in the AR one. But it's where you're talking about, um, chickens or, or, or poultry. And it says that five to nine acres, you can have ten with one rooster. So, anything below five acres, you can't have a rooster. But yet further down, it does say that you can raise chicken for pet and egg production. And I mean, it sounds kind of stupid to me that you can raise chickens, you can have four, but no roosters.
Well, first of all, this is not.
It just sounds.
Okay, I understand. This is not AR one. So, AR one, AR one is not restricted. So, let me, before that becomes a social media post that blows up the entire Facebook. AR one is not restricted on chickens regardless. So, this is R one. This is trying to allow in all the residential zonings, not AR one, but the residential, the more normal ones. For you to have a certain number of chickens and rabbits and ducks and geese.
And, and that I get you.
That's it.
But I mean, how do you get eggs with, and if you're not allowing a rooster? I mean, that's.
Allow roosters.
I mean, I, um, it didn't, it doesn't sound right. And I kept reading through this, I said, well, maybe, I mean, if that's my personal problem, I mean, that's.
Put, put those roosters in.
Okay, well, I'm just.
Let them go to town.
Okay. And I know what you're trying to get to with the, the number of chickens.
I mean, that may have been a typo, I don't know.
And, and roosters, cause roosters don't pay attention to sunrise.
Talking probably several million words here, so that may have been. By all means, in all those categories, for as an accessory use for chickens, ducks, turkeys, geese, rabbits or hares, please allow rooster.
And then I, I do, I do like your idea about just carving out that outdoor shooting range, um, section to, to not prevent, uh, going forth with.
It's another, another issue for another time.
How many, who, how many roosters per acre?
Not going to specify.
I'll tell you, more than one, more, more than one roo- rooster is going to raise a lot of hell in the morning.
I would just bring it up, it didn't, it didn't sound like to raise eggs with no roosters, I mean.
Go for it.
Noted.
Pertains to the eggs.
Come up with different wording.
Okay. Anything else, Bill?
Um, that's, that's got me.
All right. Mr. Harris?
I'm just going with the flow for right now.
Oh, wow. Okay. Mr. Hardwick?
Well, we have to start somewhere.
We, we do.
Yes.
Um, I, I will make note because I, I know this had been addressed or we'd been discussed in the past and I thought it had been struck. And I think Mr. Hardwick was the one that brought it up. But under AR, when we were talking about short-term or, excuse me, maximum makeup fee, this is under the, uh, thirty-three short-term rental, Airbnb and stuff. And, uh, there was a question made, a comment came up about saying that the person had to be twenty-five plus and stuff.
I forgot about that.
And I noticed that was, was still there.
All right.
Also noted a couple of notations in there where, um, in some areas it refers to in kind of the, the little, um, development standards and some of that where it talks about a side lot, but then the reference in there is a front lot, distance from the front lot and some things like that that were also mentioned in the past. So, there are a couple of other typos. I would like to have gotten those to you, um, before I will pass those along, but.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I'll, if you move this forward to the commissioners, they will have the correct. Well, I had forgotten about that twenty-five year old thing.
Okay. But again, I, um, I think, you know, like you say, there's a lot of words there. I think the layout is much better, the consistency is much better than what we had. Um, we're, we're certainly moving, have moved this along in the right direction. And it, it does take a lot to, to get comments from six different people at least, including, um, Newton in that number that we've had and put the comments in and stuff and catch them all. But, uh, we can work that and I think, um, we are into something good. I am for, um, adjusting the, the horse minimum in AR as well as striking the, um, the gun range scenario. So, with that, unless, is there any further comments and questions? If not, we're going to go down the list here, one by one. And we're going to start, just go down the list as it's laid out here. First item, Article Five, AR one zoning, necessary revisions and additions. Do we have a recommendation for that?
I'll move to approve subject to notations we've made tonight for corrections.
All right, let's be clear, that removes the shooting ranges.
Yes, you're correct. Yeah, I forgot that was in AR one, you're correct.
It also goes to remove the twenty-five years of age from short-term rentals. It also goes to horses at one per acre.
Yes, that's, that's what I understand. That's, that would be my motion.
Roosters are still in AR one.
Yes.
Yes.
You want to change that twenty-five to twenty-one?
They are, they are. On AR one.
Well, they should be.
Exactly.
You want to change that twenty-five, uh, just to twenty-one? You, you need adults.
Yeah, I, I think you, I think shouldn't, yeah.
Well, one of the things we had talked about, like Airbnb and stuff, they have their own requirements. If you're a part of that, y- you have to go by that. So, we had said we were going to leave it up to their.
Yeah.
Their standards and what's required by them.
Right.
That's good, thank you.
Somebody second up?
Now, we had a motion by Mr. Bryant. We have a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any further discussion? Here none, a call for the question, all in favor? Any opposition? Here none, thank you. That carries. Article Six, AR two zoning, necessary revisions and additions. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, subject to any corrections necessary from staff.
There, there were none.
Okay, I just, just want to make sure.
Right.
Is any of that?
I want to make sure.
None of those same things carry over from AR one to AR two?
You don't have a shooting range in AR one.
We don't have to worry about horses.
I will double check the roosters and the horses and the twenty-five year olds.
All right. All right. Okay, we have that motion with those comments and notations by Mr. Allen. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any further discussion? Here none, all in favor? Thank you. That is unanimous. Article Six A, agriculture tourism zoning, necessary visions and additions. Do we have a recommendation?
Make a motion to approve?
That's it.
Seconded by Mr. Hardwick. All right, any further discussion? Here none, all in favor? Signify, that is unanimous, thank you. Article Seven, R one zoning, necessary revisions and additions, recommendation?
I'll make a motion to approve, subject to any oversights of mine with roosters or horses or.
Twenty-five year olds?
And twenty-five years, always gotta watch them.
Okay, I thought in R one, y'all were okay with the rooster elimination coming out.
Right.
All right, so Bill, that is the revision.
Roosters are in.
Right, roo- roosters are now in the club.
We gotta fertilize the eggs, yes.
Not a lot of it. All right, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
The motion is to approve with roosters.
With roosters.
Twenty-five year olds.
Any further, further discussion? Here none?
Who seconded?
Brian. Right.
All right, all right. That is unanimous. Article Seven A, R dash one A zoning, necessary revisions and additions, do we have a recommendation?
Make a motion to approve.
All right.
Yes.
Okay, let's.
Roosters get back into R one A bill, so do, is that part of your motion?
Well, yes, you gotta have eggs.
With roosters.
The rest of these, I would just say with all noted changes.
I like it, thank you.
You don't have to have a rooster to have eggs.
You just gotta have them to have a, have a little chicken. All right.
Okay.
Do we have a second on that? I'll second that, okay. Any further discussion? Here none?
Yes.
All in favor, okay. All right, Article Eight, R two zoning, necessary revisions and additions.
Making, I make a motion to approve, subject to any notations.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, further discussion?
Anything we need to know about that one?
Major thing was an error that duplexes were still allowed in there. We got rid of that, but as far as.
That's been deleted.
Yes.
Duplexes as a land use in R two have been deleted.
Thank you for that, all right. Call for the vote, all in favor? All right, thank you very much. Article Eight A, R dash two A zoning, necessary revisions and additions, have a motion?
I'll make a motion, motion to approve, subject to any notations or corrections.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, no, thank you. Or any further discussion? Here none, call for the vote, all in favor? Thank you very much, unanimous. Article Nine, R dash three zoning, necessary revisions and additions, motion?
Approve, subject to corrections and notation.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Are roosters in apartments?
No.
Thank you, what about manufactured home parts?
No.
All right.
I have no problem.
Are you sure? All right, any further discussion? Here none, all in favor? That is unanimous. Article Ten, R dash four zoning, necessary revisions and additions, do we have a recommendation? Motion?
Also, as a note for this, in R five, please make a note that these uh zoning districts, while the lots they have are good, there will be no further R four and R five lots.
Okay.
The notation on your uh draft proposal to be abolished, uh, how do we need to work on that tonight then?
Well, it won't, we don't. It, the standards will still be in place, if somebody wants to build an R four house tomorrow, it's still there. There just won't be any more additional rezonings to that classification.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right, further discussion? Here none, all in favor? Thank you very much, that is unanimous. Article Eleven, R dash five zoning, necessary revisions and additions, do you have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second, anything we need to do about that one?
Same as R four.
Same.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Here none, all in favor? Thank you very much. All right, that brings us down to consider the approval of the meeting minutes for a meeting held on April twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. Um, Mr. Bryan and I were not here, so we're gonna leave it up to.
I'm sorry, that's a typo on your script on the real agenda, it says June twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth, yep, you're right. Thanks for that. Okay. So do we have a motion to approve the minutes for the April twenty-four, twenty twenty-five meeting?
I'll make a motion.
June twenty-fourth.
Yeah, June twenty-fourth, yep, last month.
Excuse me, the June twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that.
All right, motion by Mr. Hardwick.
And you and Bill were not here.
Seconded by Mr. Harris, okay. All right. So we have a motion, a second, all in favor? We can vote on it, we put it over here.
Can vote on it.
Yeah, the, the other members can vote on that.
Yeah, we just can't make a motion, second.
All you're doing is sitting in minutes.
All right, any further comments from the board members?
Good job, Mr. Allen.
Yes, indeed.
Yeah, I mean, a lot, a lot of work going into tonight. I'm glad we've got these ordinances that we just went through done and I know there's more coming, so. But thank you, it's, it's, I know it's.
Thank y'all, y'all had a, y'all had a big part in it too.
Be sure to include the roosters.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yes.
I'm gonna thank Newton, thank you Newton for the amount of support that.
Yes.
All right, anything uh further? Here none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm moved.
I'll second.
We stand adjourned, thank you very much.